Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We've got a full house today. Love it. So in compliance with Chapter 551, Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a regular voting meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, February 22, 2024, at 6:03 PM. A quorum of the Board is physically present at the AISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV, and it's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, Estown Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. You're welcome, and thank you for joining us. So first off, we have the President's Report. Our Board has started outreach and engagement opportunities on the district scorecard, and we want to invite interested staff, students, and community members to one of our upcoming meetings. There will be in-person meetings at the LBJ, Eastside, Navarro, Aikens, Northeast, and Travis vertical teams, and there will also be four district-wide virtual community zooms. And those district-wide zooms, just so you know, are going to be, and all this is online, on February 28th, March 4th, March 2nd, and March 6th. And we have different times, like during lunchtime and in the evening as well. So during these conversations, trustees will focus on four key questions, and I'm just going to read them to you. One is, how should we be able to describe a graduate of Austin ISD? Number two is, what do students need to know or be able to do during their time in Austin ISD? Three, what should Austin ISD do or not do, or stop doing, as we pursue improved outcomes for our students? And four, what do you believe is currently going well for Austin ISD? So your answers to these questions will help inform the scorecard goals and constraints. More information on the meetings and an online thought exchange survey can be found on our website at, and I'm going to read this, it's www.austinisd.org/Board/Scorecard-engagement. And as a reminder, early voting is going on right now. Who here has voted? I haven't voted yet, but I'm going to vote this weekend, right? Yes. Because that information is public, as Trustee Boswell just told us. So I can't lie, but I would promise I'm going to. It's on my calendar. I'm going to vote this weekend.
Willie Nelson always votes.
Yeah, Willie Nelson always votes, we have heard. Voting is so important to the future of public education, so please take time to make your vote count. Early voting locations will continue from now until Friday, March 1st. Locations are open each day from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and this Sunday from noon to 6:00 PM. So you can find your closest location on the Travis County election site or local news sites, and can learn more about what is on the ballot at www.vote.texas.gov, or you can Google the League of Women Voters, Austin, and you'll find their nonpartisan voting guide and this Texas Secretary of State website. So next item is committee reports. We have them posted on the written committee reports. We have posted the written committee reports as an attachment to this item on our Board Docs agenda. So this includes a committee report for the Austin Ed Fund, which we love very much. So next up is the Superintendent's Report.
Well, thank you, President Singh, members of the Board. We pull up the Superintendent's Report, and you're in for a treat tonight. The report is full of amazing students doing incredible things, from academics to performances to athletics. Our students are so incredibly talented, and they continue to make us proud every single day. So congratulations to St. Elmo Elementary. St. Elmo Elementary received the Golden Ribbon Distinction on behalf of the Children at Risk Organization. The Gold Ribbon Distinction highlights high-performing schools with many students experiencing poverty. Children at Risk Annual School Rankings includes student achievement, campus performance, and student growth. St. Elmo Elementary was the only Austin ISD school to receive this distinction this year. Way to go, St. Elmo staff and students, and congratulations to the staff for all the hard work. This is a really big deal. It's a really big deal. A huge shout-out to the Bailey Middle School Robotics Team. They recently competed in the VEX Robotics Competition at Bowie High School over the weekend and sent two teams to the quarterfinals. Absolutely incredible. You ready for the sounding feat? Marcusson Middle School Choir students auditioned for the Texas Music Educators Association, TMEA, Region 18 Honor Chair, and 20, 20 of their students were accepted. That is a huge accomplishment. I have to be sure to stop by in the choir room the next time and just wish them just all the great luck, and they're doing incredible things over there. I'll note we'll be in for a treat. Speaking of something, yeah, absolutely. Speaking of something else that is outstanding, have you heard about Matthew Chavez at Crockett Early College High School? There he is, right there on the slide. Senior Matthew Chavez has earned First Chair Jazz Alto Saxophone for the entire state of Texas for two years in a row. That's very impressive. This is a campus and district record for all-state jazz. Absolutely outstanding. Congratulations, Matthew, and go Cougars. On February 1st, Bertha Saller Means Young Women's Leadership Academy art students participated in a group mural with street artist Niz. Niz is best known for her murals throughout Austin, including her most prominent mural under the Lamar Street Bridge on Sixth and Lamar. The students had a blast creating their own stencil mural with Niz and were delighted to see how artistic expression can become an iconic part of our city enjoyed so broadly. So what a fun day. This one's pretty awesome. The 80 dancers of the McCallum Youth Dance Company presented their annual Faculty Director Dance Concert Progressions at the Austin ISD PAC on February 9th and 10th. The concert featured the dancers performing works choreographed by faculty members Natalie Yura and Terrence Carson, along with several professional choreographers from the Austin area. You can see them right there. On February 10th, Aikens Eagle Band student Noah Semzar performed with the most prestigious high-school ensemble in Texas, the Texas Music Educators Association All-State Symphony Orchestra. Through a courageous application and audition process, he was accepted to the National Youth Orchestra, all expenses paid. The group rehearsed for three weeks, then traveled throughout Latin America, performing their world-class repertoire. Noah is the only Austin ISD student accepted into this prestigious youth orchestra. That is, that's awesome. Director of Bands at Sam L. Martin Middle School, Alex Mutz, was selected by Yamaha as one of the top 40 under-40 music educators in America for his contributions to the music education field. It's teachers like Mr. Mutz that help us create all of these wonderful artists and musicians here in Austin ISD. Forty under forty, that's pretty impressive. That is really amazing. The Knights of Steel Drum Band from McCallum High School was a featured ensemble at the Texas Music Educators Association, TMEA, annual convention on February 8th. The convention is the largest of its kind in the world, and only a handful of groups are selected to perform out of hundreds of applicants. This was the ensemble's first appearance at TMEA. The Knights of Steel will also be performing at the National Society of Steel Band Educators Conference, which will be hosted by McCallum High School on February 23rd and 24th. This is the group's first appearance at NSSB, and they'll be sharing the stage with the Inside Out Steel Band, Austin's only community steel drum ensemble. The Knights of Steel are under the direction of Ryan Pride and CJ Menj, and will be featured in the opening concert of the conference with guitarist, artist Carolyn Trobridge and Garen Williams. So absolutely. Ann Richards freshman Noah Morris achieved second place at regionals in the 500-meter freestyle, making her our very first state qualifying swimmer. That is absolutely fantastic. Congratulations, Noah. Noah will be rooting for you at state. Bowie High School 10th grader Rowan Cox earned first place in the 100 Fly at the Summer Junior Nationals, qualifying him for the Olympic Trials. You heard that right. He's a sophomore and is currently ranked 26 in the country for the 100 Fly. Absolutely incredible. And so with that, that concludes the Superintendent's Report out. What an incredible, let's give him a round of applause. I was just like so surprised, just an alumni. Thank you, President Singh. Thank you, trustees.
Thank you.
That concludes my presentation.
I could feel the positive vibes from Trustee Gonzalez when he mentioned the musical genius coming out of Aikens, as we have another example of musical genius from Aikens High School right here. So, okay. So next up, we have an update on our intruder detection audits, which is way less fun. So Mr. Segura.
Thanks for that warm opening.
Your fun.
Okay, great. I try to bring excitement to this important work. So as we know, every month, we come and share about the requirement to detect vulnerable access points and identify possible areas of improvement or security procedures for our campuses. State law does require that we provide to our Board the outcome of any campuses that may not have met every part of those drills, and there are four parts. That includes an intruder detection audit, an exterior door audit, a classroom door audit, if district policy is to keep the classroom doors locked, and a review of weekly audit logs for on-campus walkthroughs. I actually do not have a report tonight, but we always keep it on the agenda because we want to be ready, since if there is anyone that fails one of those parts, we have to report out. So we will be ready for March if needed, and thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Reach, clarification? Are you saying that we're not reporting out because no one failed, or we're not reporting out because no reports have been given?
We are, we do not have any reports of any failure since we last met.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reach. Okay, so our next item on the agenda is our annual fiscal forecast. The administration prepared a video presentation which can be viewed on YouTube using the link in the agenda item, or by viewing the video file attached to tonight's agenda item on Board Docs. We have 60 minutes scheduled for this discussion. As a reminder, we're also going to hold a Lone Star Governance Retreat Session, which is public, at the end of this meeting to discuss questions and goals for future budget discussions, and to ensure our time on the budget is aligned to student outcomes. So the 60 minutes that we have allotted for this part is actually not counted as student outcomes, just FYI, but just, do you know, but we felt like it was important enough as fiduciaries of the district to have a public conversation on some of the key highlights and kind of share where we are and what to expect, both from the administration side and just as our role as trustees, kind of what we might be expecting with the budget conversations. So, Mr. Segura.
Thank you, President Singh, Board of Trustees. Tonight, we have Ed Ramos, Chief Financial Officer, to answer any questions regarding the presentation regarding the fiscal year 2024 to 2027 fiscal forecast. But before we get going into that and the dialogue around the questions, what we want to do is to kind of set the stage for kind of how the fiscal forecast and the budgeting process really inform the work over the next several months. So I do have a presentation, and if we could pull it up here. One of the things I wanted to communicate, and as we move to the first slide, is that it's really important that we, as an organization in alignment with the Board, understand the constraints that we're working through as we move through this process. One of the things that we often talk about is a current reality, and we talk about the 20% fund balance, and that is a commitment that we have committed to as a body, as an organization. In last June, we also did adopt a $52 million budget deficit. Both of those things are helping inform and will be part of the process as we move forward. We are on track to cut that $52 million deficit in half by the end of this fiscal year. However, the legislature has chosen not to increase public education funding. And so when we did agree to the $52 million deficit, there were certain things that were unknown at that point. One of the biggest things was, would the state actually pass legislation that would increase the basic student allotment or other funding sources? We know now that that didn't happen. Therefore, we'll have to make cuts corresponding to any proposed budget increases, right? And there are certain budget parameter risks that we have to all talk about and come to consensus on as we move through this process. So how do we get here? Well, last year, when we passed the budget, we knew that we had to commit to investing in our staff. We had significant needs, we had areas of opportunity, and so we committed to a 7% raise, and we also committed to a $4 raise for classified staff. The other thing I want to point out to the Board is we were very intentional about also identifying different areas of opportunity, including stipends for multilingual education, stipends for special education, and also really addressing some of the opportunities around special education itself regarding LSSPs, diagnosticians. And so all of that contributed to the $52 million deficit. Now, you heard me just a moment ago talk about the fact that we've cut that deficit in half. Well, how do we do that? Well, a couple of different things. First is through vacancy savings. You know, we budget as though the person or any expense is over the duration of the entire year. We know, in fact, that there is a time and sequence to everything within an organization, and through those processes, we can accept and receive and account for some vacancy savings. We've also been very intentional about managing overtime expenses. You know, one of the things that often happens is if you don't have staff, you have and compensate with the labor by paying overtime, and that can be very costly. And we've also been scrutinizing contract expenses over the course of the year. One of the things that I think has been very helpful is, over the course of many, many meetings, we're very intentional about the current burn rates within each division, making sure that we don't impact the classroom, we don't impact the educational experience, but those costs that we control and manage every single day, we are monitoring and tracking and as a group and as a team, determining whether those expenses need to be incurred at that rate. And then lastly, given the current interest rates, interest earnings that we've received along the way. So those three things have really contributed to us not having that $52 million deficit be carried into the future in this upcoming fiscal year. Next slide. So a couple of questions to consider, and these are the questions that I think are really going to help inform the budgeting process that we go through together. The first is, how much fund balance should we keep? You know, the administration recommendation is to continue on with where we've been, which is 20%. You know, there have been conversations in the past that, you know, perhaps could that be reduced? One of the things I would say is, given the uncertainty, forward-looking, not knowing what the state will do, not knowing where we'll be with inflation, not knowing where we'll be with enrollment, you know, the administration's recommendation is to maintain the 20%. And so one of the things we'll be seeking, not necessarily today, but through dialogue over the next couple of weeks, is where is the Board regarding the administration's recommendation regarding maintaining the 20% fund balance? Next slide. How much of a budget deficit can be tolerated? This is another question that we often talk about, Ed, myself, and the rest of the team. Recognize that if any expense incurred that is an ongoing expense will have to be carried in the future years, meaning that if we continue to have a deficit, it's going to burn down our reserve, thereby, you know, potentially introducing risk in future years. So we always think about fiscal year 1, 2, 3 out and work backwards, trying to maintain a 20% fund balance multiple years out. And so one of the things that we want to be very cognizant of, we want to talk about is that any increase in deficit budget will have an adverse impact to fund balance in future years. So you increase it, fund balance will go down quicker. You reduce it, it'll go down less quickly. If it's balanced, it'll maintain or go up. And so certainly, you know, decreasing the deficit to 20 to 25 would lessen the impact, as I just stated, but increasing it would have a significant adverse impact. And so one of the things that we're seeking is, how much of a deficit could we, as an organization with approval from the Board, support moving forward? And we've had those conversations and are prepared to have that dialogue with the Board. And then lastly, carrying forward a $30 million deficit, seeing that that is, as we project out and look at forecasts, which is in the backup, you know, what would an increase look like if we had to address certain needs within the organization? So if any compensation consideration, any additional programming, all of those things would need to have an equal offset, right, to maintain the $30 million deficit? And so when we think about those adds, we have to be very, very, very sure that those are the adds that we, as a community, as an organization, as administration support, and certainly the Board. So one of the things that I often talk about is it has to align with Board priorities. It must limit impact to the classroom, and it must align with our initiatives. If those three things aren't true, then should we be considering it as an add, knowing that we're going to have to ultimately make a cut to offset that cost? And so, next slide. We certainly recognize that there are opportunities to increase revenue, you know, as we move towards any balance budget process or any budget process in general, you always look at costs, you look at expenses, you also look at revenue. And we've often talked about these, whether it's the improved enrollment, which we know has been flat, though slightly decreasing, and I think we've done a really good job of minimizing the downward trajectory, but we also know that, you know, an increase of an amount that would have a meaningful impact is not likely, and we need to be realistic about it. Improved attendance, 90% average daily attendance, you know, moving that up by 1% would increase $4.5 million in additional funding. The challenge that we have at the moment is, the entire state, the entire region is really experiencing this type of overall impact. And so we could work really, really hard and increase by, you know, a quarter of a percent, but what are the resources required to actually do that? And do those actually offset the revenue that could be generated? So something to think about, but what I don't want anybody to do is say, "Matias, why don't you just do 95%? Why don't you do 96?" Because that sometimes will occur, and I want to be honest that, you know, it's incremental improvement over time. Certainly, Ed will continue as our CFO to maximize interest earnings, so you could see us to take, continue to see us take advantage of those opportunities. And then lastly, perhaps for a future conversation, just introducing the idea of leveraging all gold and copper pennies, and recognizing that if that was considered, it would ultimately yield additional revenue starting in fiscal year 24, 25, or 25, 26, depending on when that vote would occur. Next slide. So as we move forward, as President Singh said, you know, we have the introduction of the fiscal forecast in this presentation. We'll have a dialogue with the Board via work session here in about an hour or so. But what's important for us is that organizations understand kind of what the constraints are, work transparently with our community to arrive at a budget that the Board can support. And so we have here is a schedule of what that might look like. So set parameters for the budgeting process, that's kind of what today is about. Proposed potential investments and cuts, that'll be in early March, perhaps, the Board meeting, depending on the timing with spring break, you know, that can be a challenge to schedule around. We'll refine the proposed potential investment in cuts through the month of April. We'll deliberate and engage with the Board, and ultimately move towards a final budget approval in June. And as always, we're committed to engage with our community. That's a commitment that we've had, we'll continue to do that, and also engage with our staff to ensure that, you know, everybody understands where we are and why we're looking at this work in this way as we move through the process. So with that, you know, we'll open it up to any questions that y'all may have, and certainly we'll follow President Singh's lead.
Thank you. So trustees, do you have any questions? Yes, Trustee Boswell.
Thank you very much for this. Really appreciate the transparency, the reality, the starting to give our Board and our community a sense of the trade-offs, so thank you for that. The goal is to use every dollar as well as we can, and we have to make hard choices. So thank you for that. I want to, I have a couple of questions. One is, talking about, just for full transparency and accuracy, talking about the legislature not increasing education funding, more money's in, more requirements followed that. Just being really clear, there wasn't an increase to the basic allotment, there was some money put into public ed, but not in a way that we're seeing in our classrooms. Can you clarify that for people so we...
Excellent.
So that's correct. The most meaningful impact that the state can make with public education funding is to increase the basic allotment. That hasn't been done since 2019. It didn't happen through any of the special sessions. So we now know, as of right now and through our budget planning process, we are still at $6,160 per student. So that means that we will not have seen a funding increase for over a six-year period, which is one of the longest periods that public schools have gone without receiving a per-student funding increase. Also, you'll see legislators start mentioning that they did make a large investment in public education, and they, it's basically tax compression. So when you look at tax compression, it did lower our tax rate, but it also lowered our tax collections. And so the net effect to public education funding was $0 for us.
And if we talk about that security funding, for example, which did flow to districts...
So, so security funding, they did increase the safety allotment, but they also put in additional requirements, which for us would be placing a police officer at every campus. And so the additional funding per campus for Austin ISD was $30,000. We all know that a police officer costs much more than $30,000, not only with salary, but equipment, vehicle, and so we, it was basically for us an unfunded mandate.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And really appreciate the conversation, just toe in the water, about golden and copper pennies and a tax rate election. I think when we're looking at not many good options, appreciate the opportunity to start thinking about that, so thank you for that. And do you have a sense of what that would yield?
So if we move forward with copper pennies, we would have nine copper pennies available to Austin ISD. We estimate currently that that would yield an estimated $46 million in additional revenue.
Thank you. And can you just share a little bit about the situation statewide, just briefly?
So if you start Googling the new school districts, school districts are starting to announce budget deficits statewide. I know SciFair just announced a $78 million deficit. You'll see Dallas, the Dallas ISD area, Dallas schools are announcing budget deficits. Spring Branch just initiated three phases in budget reductions, and so those are pretty stringent. And so you're going to start hearing more and more of those announcements as school districts are facing a budget, really a budget shortfall all across the state. Many of us move forward with pay raises, just to make sure that we retain our employees with the hope that, since the legislature faced a record surplus, they would increase school funding. We now know that did not materialize, and so we are now having to take action because of the lack of funding that did not materialize. And so we are having to look at our expenditures, repurpose our budgets, where we, as districts, see a priority, where we need to continue to invest in, and the trade-offs with that. If we invest in a certain area, where can we trade off and reduce expenditures in other areas?
Thank you for that. And then my final kind of question and comment, appreciate the focus on that 1% improvement in attendance. I know I've looked at the campus-by-campus numbers, and some of our most vulnerable campuses, especially our high schools, are the places with the biggest challenges, and I would love for some guidance from the administration on how that fits in with our initiatives about academic achievement, CCMR, mental health, all the other things we're trying to climb in culture, kind of how that fits in, and what impact, if that's money that we spend, that really has a broad mix of impacts, not just fiscal, but also student achievement and other things. So really would appreciate whatever thoughts you have to share as we start discussing our options. So thank you for that.
Trustees, any other questions? Could you, Ed, could you talk a little bit about special education in particular? Like, what is the gap between what we actually spend for our students who are entitled to proper, you know, services, and what we're actually getting from state and federal funds that we also should be getting?
So currently, based on our special education student numbers, we do receive state allocation for special ed-needed services of an estimated $75 million. We spend, and we currently have budgeted in our operating budget, $166 million in special education expenditures. So the amount we receive is far less than the actual needs of the district. That was one area that the legislature was looking at increasing, was special ed. funding. But again, because of the debate with private schools and vouchers, that funding did not materialize.
So what, I'm sorry, what were those figures again?
So, so we, based on our special education student numbers, we receive an allocation of an estimated $75 million from the state. Our budget in overall expenditures that we budget out of our operating budget is $166 million currently.
Okay. And then what about the IDEA funding? Is that part of that 75, or is that...
No, that's separate. So IDEA funding, we receive about $18 million.
Okay. $18 million. Okay. All right. And we, some of those, Trustee Boswell and I were just in DC last week for the TASB conference and learned that, once again... the TASB conference and learned that, once again, like, the federal funding for special education is not where it should be. It's 14% of what it should be of the, we only get about 14%, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, of what it should be. And so, there's advocacy that needs to be done at the state level, but also at the national level. And just really appreciate, just to echo what trustee Boswell was saying, that the administration is stretching every, every dollar so that our kids get their free and appropriate public education. So trustees, are there any other questions? Okay. All right. And we'll continue this conversation in our retreat tonight after the meeting. So, what's, oh, so our next item isn't up. So thank you, Ed, appreciate that. So our next item is an update from our equity assessment provider, which has been a real priority for this board. We have a video available online from our partner, WestEd, which can be viewed on YouTube using the link in the agenda item, or by viewing the video file attached to tonight's agenda item. We have scheduled 30 minutes for this discussion, so Mr. Segura, can you please introduce this item?
Absolutely, I'd love to. I'd like to welcome Dr. Holly Up, Chief Officer of Organizational Transformation. Dr. Holly is now available to answer any questions, but we also have the team here. Dr. Holly, would you like to introduce the team?
Absolutely. Good evening, President Singh, trustees, and Superintendent Segura. This evening, we have the opportunity to have a conversation about some work that started in early fall. In the interest of time, I'm going to ask our researchers to introduce themselves and then just give a little bit of background, just very quickly, about what's been going on in the district since early fall, so.
Hello, everyone, it's nice to be here. Hello, everyone. My name is Raifu Dourdoye. I'm a senior researcher at WestEd. WestEd is an education policy research firm, it's actually headquartered in San Francisco. I operate, I have a home office here in Austin, Texas. Just in terms of what I do at WestEd, I do a lot of intervention research, I support a lot of fairly funded education research projects. For this particular project, I'm leading Phase One, which is an analytic phase, where we're bringing a lot of information to bear to inform Phase Two, which will be the culmination of the project, where we'll convene a district equity team that will go through the information that we've generated and that we've analyzed, and then start making decisions and recommendations for the district moving forward. So, that's me, and that's what we're going to do, and now I'll hand it off to.
And don't forget, you're also an AISD parent.
I am, that's important to note, yes. Triple, triple times, so three kids and AISD, yes.
Hello, my name is Nicole Futz. I am an Austin resident, I am not a parent yet, so that's TBD. On this project, I serve as principal researcher, representing Joden Macklin, which is a data analytics firm, and partnering with WestEd, and I'll be conducting, I have been conducting the quantitative and some qualitative research and analysis for this project.
All right, so.
Hey, everyone, I'm David Lopez.
Jacob, we also have Mr. Lopez on Zoom. Where would he be, Jacob? Did we lose him?
I'm here.
Oh, I can hear you.
Okay.
All right. Wanted, David, wanted a chance for you to introduce yourself as well.
Absolutely. Hi, everyone, I'm David Lopez. I am the technical assistance lead and be leading Phase Two of this work. I'm the director of equitable systems at WestEd, and a lot of my work is centered around disproportionality, culture response of sustaining education, and building equitable systems.
Thank you. All right, so trustees, do you have any questions for this team? Yes, trustee Hunter.
They are not formulated well. I was looking through the presentation, and it looked like in Phase One that there was some communication with families?
That is correct. So, the way that we engage families, we had meeting-making conversations, that was to give families the opportunity to kind of inform our process. So before we kind of dug deep and created a very rigid plan, we wanted them to have the opportunity to kind of understand what we were doing and where their interests lied and what they valued as a part of the process. And then also, we had focus groups with family members. And we're just in the midst of analyzing the transcripts from those focus groups. So we've engaged families two different ways through the course of Phase One.
Okay, and if I was seeing the, seeing the information correctly, it looked like in Phase Two, we were going to be doing something again with parents? Or is it like carrying over?
More be carrying over, so we're taking that information, we're going to synthesize it for the district equity team. The district equity team is then going to review that information, that's going to inform the recommendations in the ongoing conversations. But families are not necessarily on the district equity team, but they will be informed in terms of recommendations and the conversations that stem from the information they provided in Phase One, to keep them in the loop, for lack of a better term.
Thank you.
Any other trustees have questions?
Okay, I have a couple of questions. First, just thank you, this is a long-awaited equity assessment. I think this was one of the first things that came up when I joined the board like five years ago. So really excited that we're partnering with WestEd on this. Thank you, Dr. Holly, for your leadership. So I think one of the, I'm really curious to know when we are going to get some findings, and if there, I know that you mentioned at a very high level, some of the early findings that you've had. Would you be able to share just a little bit, like what you, what is kind of rising to the top, and what you're, what you're hearing from our community?
No, no problem at all. So, in Phase One, we had four different deliverables, the focus groups, the meeting-making conversations, a document review, and exploratory data analysis. So from the document review, one thing that I can say that we found is that Austin ISD obviously has a lot of different plans, they spent a lot of time, invested a lot of effort in trying to get a sense of what's going on with the most vulnerable students in the community. But sometimes the plans have not necessarily been aligned, so we're going to work with the administration to kind of think through how we prioritize different strategies, so we can understand, you know, what's primary, what's secondary, and what's tertiary, and that will probably increase capacity and kind of help us along our way. I'll say in terms of the focus groups, we learned a lot from educators in the district. From my perch, we do this work all over the country, and we hear things in Austin that we hear around the country, which is teachers are stressed, they want improved working conditions, and sometimes they feel like they don't have all the resources they need to support the most vulnerable students in the community. And then I'll say from the meeting-making conversations, just to make this brief, we talked to a lot of community organizations, and some of the things that they had also mentioned were that they really appreciate being involved in these processes with the district. They really believe that the district is invested in improving outcomes for vulnerable marginalized students, but they wish that the district could be more proactive in terms of engaging them. And they thought maybe through the course of COVID, it was more reactive because we needed more supports, so they were engaged, and then they just want to maintain that level of engagement now that we're not in an emergency or a pandemic situation. But that's in, those results are preliminary, and there's more to say, but I know we're locked, so.
We've got 30 minutes here.
Okay.
I know this board is very interested in the equity, so really, please, I mean, we mapped it all out, we got 30 minutes, so if you do have questions, feel free to ask, because we've got the experts right here. Yes, trustee Zapata.
So you mentioned that some of the, was it teachers, that said that they didn't have enough support, resources for the classroom, is that?
I mean, teachers brought up a number of different ways that they felt like they could get more support, some of it was resources. And actually, we had some conversations around them, engaging the administration, actually getting additional resources. So I want to make it clear, there also were positives, right? We're just kind of focusing on the ways that we can improve. But also in terms of resources, it was even information in terms of how to route students to the proper resources they needed to be successful, not necessarily knowing some of the things that are actually taking place in the district, they just don't necessarily have that information. They wanted to make sure that there was a way that they had access, and they could provide that to their students.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do have a question, another one, being that, as you've probably noticed, special education has been a really big focus for us. And when you're looking at, during your equity assessment, how does special education fit into that?
Yes, so when we initially drafted the proposal, we kind of identified, what's the target population? We're talking about disadvantaged students. So one are students with disabilities, students of color, economically disadvantaged students, and emerging or just bilingual students in the district. So they're part and parcel with the target group that we're interested in focusing on for the equity assessment, because again, we're, we're interested in supporting the most vulnerable, the most disadvantaged students, because often those are the students who are left behind. So every time we ask questions, we're trying to get a sense of those students' experiences across the board, but for those particular demographic groups.
All right, anyone else? Okay. All right, well, thank you so much, we really appreciate all the work and look forward to more. So thank you so much. Okay, so we will now move to public testimony for items on the consent agenda. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public testimony portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio-record their remarks. And tonight, there was one caller who, we, there were no callers who signed up to speak in person, and we have one who left a recorded message, so we will play it now. Thank you.
This is Roxane Evans. As a former tri-chair of the AISD Fab PAC and champion for the 2017 and 2022 bond, which the district hailed as an equitable bond package, I want to speak on Agenda Item 9.5 and ask the board to direct the administration to make the best, most fiscally prudent and equitable decision on the selection of the financial firm to sell the voter-approved bonds on Wall Street. By choosing the firm, Seibert Williams Bank, the district can satisfy community expectations for fairness, equity, and inclusion. The experience and quality of the firm will help the district get the best price for the bonds, which is good fiscal stewardship. The diverse firm management team includes Vice Chair Henry Sisnetos, former mayor of San Antonio and HUD secretary, and at the local level, former AISD CFO Nicole Conley. The board seeks community trust when our votes are needed, and to not squander that trust, the board should do the right and equitable thing by directing the administration to approve SWS for this tranche of bond sales. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So trustees, do you have any questions or clarifications on the public comments? Okay, so, this concludes our public comments. So as a reminder, please feel free to share any general comments or questions on non-voting items with the board by, or voting items, really, with the board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. Our next item is part of our commitment to discuss student achievement, and we have a presentation on the middle-of-year, or MOE, third-grade MAP growth math reporting for students receiving special education services. You'll recall that last time, we were talking about reading, so this time we're focused on math. So before we hear our presentation, we do need to confirm that our monitoring report is complete. So does anyone on the board have evidence that the elements of an effective monitoring report are not present? Okay. Thank you. So, since everyone agrees that the required elements are present, we will turn the floor to Superintendent Segura for the presentation.
Thank you, President Singh. The team and I will present on the special education student performance on Goal Progress Monitoring 2.1 and 2.2 tonight. I have joining me Patty Rodriguez, Deputy Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Leading, Dr. Drew Robinett, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education Programs, Dr. Cherry Lee, Executive Director of Instructional Delivery and Inclusion, and Dylan Finan, Director of Campus and, Finan, if I got me right. I've tried, I got it right last time. Director of Campus and District Accountability. And so, as we move into the presentation, I do want to point out that this is part of the retooled scorecard that was adopted by the board just a couple months ago, and that we are going to continue to provide monitoring updates, and the focus of the conversation is to really talk about the data, the, what the administration identifies as root causes, opportunities for growth, and then kind of steps forward as we address some of the opportunities. So, Goal Two, third-grade students' earning meets grade level on the STAR Math Assessment in English or Spanish will increase from 51% in June 2020 to 60% by June of 2026. And the Growth Progress Measure 2.1, students identified on the Math MAP Assessment for third grade at the on-grade level or above will increase from 43% in June of 2022 to 60% by June of 2026. And then Growth Progress Measure 2.2, students identified on the Math MAP Assessment for second grade on the on-grade level or above will increase from 30% in June 2022 to 60% by June of 2026. And now I'll hand it over to Dylan to take us through the data.
Thank you, Superintendent Segura. So we progress monitor Goal Two with GPMs 2.1 and 2.2. If you remember from last time, we looked at the same data, but in the context of reading. So now we're looking at the performance of students receiving special education services in mathematics. Next slide, please. We'll start by looking at this table, and what the table does is it summarizes our progress monitoring efforts to date. It shows you MAP growth performance at the fall administration and at the winter administration for all students, and for students receiving special education services in both third and second grade. Tonight, we're discussing the third column over, which is the winter administration or our MOE assessment. And if we look at performance of students receiving special education services in mathematics, we see that 14% of them on the winter administration had a STAR projected proficiency value of meets grade level or higher. And STAR projected proficiency of meets grade level or higher is what we consider on-grade level. Now, if we look at all students in third grade, what we see is that 35% of them had a STAR projected proficiency value of meets grade level or higher. When we go and look at second-grade students, we see that second-grade students, all of them, had a STAR projected proficiency value of 27% or higher. And second-grade students receiving special education services, 13% of them had a STAR projected proficiency value of meets grade level or higher. Now, our goals for students receiving special education services is that by the end of the year, we hope 25% of them are at meets grade level or higher. To clarify too, on this time, for mathematics, at both grade levels, you are seeing results for both English and Spanish combined. If you remember last time, second grade, we had English-only results for reading, but this time we have English and Spanish combined for mathematics. So now that we've looked at it overall, we'll look at them specifically in the context of this chart. So when we look at this chart, we're really looking at the blue bar in the middle, and that represents the percentage of students at meets grade level or higher. And in this first chart, we're looking at third-grade students receiving special education services. What we want to see is, we want to see that blue bar reach the bottom dotted line, which is our 25% goal. And if that top dotted line is 35%, what that represents is the third-grade class as a whole, and ideally, we would like to see that blue bar reach that. Because what that means is, is that our students receiving special education services are doing the same as every other student in the district. So ideally, we would like that bar to hit that top dotted line. So when we look at this, we see that in math, 14% of third-grade students receiving special education services have a STAR projected proficiency value of meets grade level and above. AISD is currently 11 percentage points, or approximately 137 students shy of meeting our end-of-the-year goal, which is 25%. In the next slide, if we look at this in terms of second grade, what we see is that in math, 13% of second-grade students receiving special education services have a STAR projected proficiency value of meets grade level or above, and this is currently 12 percentage points below of our, below our goal, and that equates to approximately 129 students. Given that information, I'll hand it off to Ms. Robinett.
Thank you, Dylan. Good evening, trustees, President Singh. In examining these data, we'd like to draw your attention to our understanding of the root causes, and several root causes that you can see here on the slide provided. The first one, in terms of coherence and consistency in mathematics, seeking greater system alignment and coherence in the use of curricular resources availed to teachers and with some stronger implementation. We want to acknowledge that in our root cause analysis, there have been multiple math resources used in exchange since the pandemic and during the pandemic, three in the course of about four years, which causes quite a bit of challenge in terms of consistency and implementation with multiple changes. And during the pandemic, these third graders, even second graders, some, many of whom were in pre-K at the time and thereafter, really experienced a heavy reliance on digital tools, which albeit can be helpful, but likewise have persisted with some consistency challenges in terms of implementation of our resources. A second one is related to. our resources. A second one is related to the, the decreased manipulative use, and we call it movement, or really heads together in planning and problem-solving for students, less concrete and abstract thinking, in the, in the use of manipulatives in classrooms. So to paint a picture, many of our students in their kindergarten year were examining and really witnessing in a more passive way mathematics on a screen. And to their kinder and into first grade, we still had social distancing that persisted, even though we had interrupted schooling. And then likewise, even sanitizing and cleaning manipulatives and really building those concrete models with students at that early, the early levels was not only interrupted, it was less practiced because folks weren't as comfortable with that level of implementation. And so those things are foundational to filling in a stronger foundation for numeracy and foundational understandings for our students in terms of concepts. Anytime we have resource development or new resources, we know it takes several, really years, but time for folks to be able to internalize the use of those high-quality, high-yield practices. That internalization is always coupled with stronger professional learning and engagement throughout. And so evidence-based resources, having an emphasis on a consistent and intentional rollout plan was an area of growth that has obviously influenced and sort of compounded in terms of the results that we're seeing that the team will be talking about this evening. Last but not least is around, the title that's here says unbalanced time and attention. I think it's better framed as sort of competing priorities when you're looking at rollout of implementation. And so we do know that research tells us that strong foundational literacy skills likewise have often a strong connection to strong numeracy skills. And so that's not that there is a potential for great high yield in both areas over time. But as you know, with your investments, we've put quite a bit of time and investment in, in early literacy, and that's very, very important. We likewise know that in our elementary classes, all the way K through 3, primarily, not always, but primarily, they're self-contained classes. And so when there's time competing for building capacity and utilization of that time and more confidence and, and skill building, sometimes reading and literacy take that front seat. We don't want it to be at the expense of mathematics development. We want both sides of one coin to really build those strong foundational skills for our students in terms of numeracy as well. Now, we're going to get into how we're working to address these root causes. And the team is a cross-functional team that you'll get to, to hear from tonight that's here to address that. Importantly, when we go into the discussion, we just want to send a reminder, this is a familiar slide to you, that this, over 76% of our students receiving special education services and support, supports spend a, a large majority of their time in general education settings. Those high-yield instructional practices or evidence-based strategies that you're probably hearing echoes through since the time that Ms. Drinks and, and Dr. Maxwell came here in January, our prior meeting, those pieces are built in and will be a part of the iteration this evening because we know that those are paralleled in terms of high-yield practices for emergent bilingual students, students with disabilities, scaffolds for support. Of course, we need to individualize, but when we do those things with greater success and with that ongoing professional learning and consistency, then we have the greater, greater impact in terms of student improvement and outcomes. So I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Cherry.
Good evening. As referenced in the previous board meeting, the TICs tree and the simple view of reading tainted our understanding of literacy development. And likewise, the strands of math proficiency shown here show the interwoven skills required for students to develop into strong mathematicians. These components include the development of accurate and efficient math calculation and fluency skills, strategies for solving multi-step problems, and really viewing math as connected to their daily lives. Next slide. So teacher implementation of high-leverage practices are fundamental to helping students learn across subject areas, including math. And within our newly revised math curriculum, learning targets and success criteria are embedded and support teachers as they guide students to set long and short-term learning goals. Scaffolds, engagement, flexible station/rotation activities, and explicit and sequenced instruction are also included within our curriculum documents and our professional training opportunities. We use the iXL and Dreambox digital platforms to supplement instruction and practice. Additional supports include graph paper, coordinate grids, 2D and 3D shapes, calculators, hands-on manipulatives, and formula charts to assist students in calculation and problem-solving tasks.
Good evening. As stated previously by Dr. Robinett, the majority of our students, as you saw, receiving special education services and support actually receive that support during core instruction or what we call first instruction. With that being considered, we're going to talk about the actual curriculum resource that was purchased for this school year with ESSER funding, and that's STEM Scopes Math. It is set up in a 5E model. And so for those of us who are STEM-related, 5E is actually the most recommended structure for instruction in the STEM curriculum. And so with that, it also allows essential components of mathematics instruction, but very rigorous math instruction. So we're implementing that in our classrooms, and that's helping both our teachers to grow as well as our students. So as we also mentioned, that it needs a lot of professional learning to go alongside with any resource. And so one of the things that's new this year, and I think that Dr. Lee was mentioning in the high-leverage practices, is that we added what's called just-in-time trainings this school year. And so our specialists have been preparing these sessions, and what happens is that teachers are actually engaging in those practices that Dr. Lee discussed. But they're doing it, and they're learning about the curriculum from the viewpoint of the learner. So they're not just being spoken to as teachers, but they're actually engaging with the curriculum as their learners would. And then that way, they have a stronger understanding of what's there, and they can then turn that around for their students. So far this year, we've had over 500 participants with another 250 coming next week. And the teachers are also walking away not only with lessons and ideas, but manipulatives and tools that we also referenced to actually turn that around immediately with their students in the classroom. Next slide, please. Another essential component, as we discussed, is the numeracy routines. And so since we know those are high-leverage instructional practices, it not only helps students build their mathematical reasoning and really understanding math beyond just procedures. And so STEM Scopes actually has daily numeracy embedded as part of the instructional materials in the curriculum. And these routines allow daily opportunities for students to engage in numeracy-building activities, strengthening their foundational math knowledge, and really helping create more flexibility in their own mathematical thinking. And so of course, as a scaffold, teachers can allow students to operate with tools they may need, as you can see here on the screen. They can start in a more concrete way, and the goal of numeracy is to actually start pulling away from concrete and moving into abstract thinking. Again, since this is the first year with the resource, our specialists have worked really hard to make sure that numeracy activities are embedded and modeled as part of the just-in-time trainings that I was previously mentioning. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Ms. Rodriguez.
All right, thank you. Okay, so as we look ahead to our commitments and our practices to address our root causes, we've identified six key strategies that will definitely have a positive impact on student achievement. So we have an opportunity to reimagine our multi-tier system of support framework so that it's truly impacting Tier 1 by way of strong first teach. But it's also going to serve as a preventative measure of support for all of our students. So what have we done already in the area of MTSS? So our teachers, our campus leaders, and all of our teaching, learning, and leading leaders have participated, participated in well over 15-ish, maybe 17 hours of training. And they've also had multiple opportunities to put these practices into play, whether it was during planning sessions or during our PLCs to guide that implementation. And why this work was so important is because it level-set everyone. So whether it was a novice teacher, an experienced teacher, and same for our leaders, we wanted to make sure that we had that coherence because we definitely have identified the lack of coherence as, as one of our root causes. And what are we currently working on? So in partnership with academics, school leadership, special education, and several other of our teaching, learning, and leading leaders, Dr. Maxwell and the committee are really leading the creation of an MTSS manual. And what this is going to do is it's going to align our vision, our expectations, and our practices, as well as our resources across our system. So again, you hear that coherence and consistency coming in. So this means that our campuses are receiving one message and that we are also recognizing what are the supports that are needed upfront in order for all of our students to be successful. So this initiative is going to span well over the course of a year, but I'm super excited that this is already well underway. And then what's expected in the near future? I've talked about before how essential coaching is. And so when we think about an initiative that's going to be over a year and a half, we want our leaders and we want our teachers to have that support throughout the entire process. So what that is going to require is that we bring in the observation and feedback cycle into this process so that it supports our teachers to get that consistent feedback as they're implementing these strategies. At the same time, we want our leaders to become those experts and have that confidence in order to be able to lead these coaching conversations. So as mentioned already tonight, professional development and coaching is definitely an area of opportunity. So we know that focusing on universal design, inclusive practices, the use of evidence-based practices, and student-centered planning is going to have that much stronger implementation and success when you start with an effective plan that involves professional development. And so all of this is woven into, as well into, our MTSS. And this is really what we want to see in the classrooms. And so as an extension of the work that we've already talked about with just-in-time, which is currently happening and has happened, that extension of the work is a group of leaders coming together as one from the lens of special education, academics, leadership, and other leaders across our district, including talent strategy. They're going in and seeing, how do these practices look like in the classroom when they're coming alive? And they're doing this through instructional rounds. So for the very near future, we know that there's an opportunity in looking at the design of our professional development so that it really includes that opportunity for our teachers to practice and also includes that individualized learning experience. And so really, our overall goal, not just with the strategies, but just in general, is to attain that system alignment and outcomes. And so a great example of that is our current structure within teaching, learning, and leading. We have that space right now to just organically collaborate. So all of the initiatives under TLNL have been, have been really, it's like a culmination of different perspectives put together as one. And why that's important is because we make sure that we are taking into consideration all of the different needs of our campuses, but that we come out with one goal. So if we have that one message and we have that one vision and one goal, then that's a model for our campuses as well to go down on that same similar path of, of alignment. So this concludes our presentation, and at this time, we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. So thank you so much. So we will now open the floor for our monitoring conversation. And as a reminder, we have asked questions that are of technical or tactical nature before tonight's meeting. But this is really a time for us to ask questions that are more of a strategic nature, meaning we will ask questions to help us understand how the reality for our students is aligning with our vision. We actually have, I think, I want to say two, oh, 90 minutes allotted for this entire discussion, but of course, we don't have to use it all. But this was really helpful. So I guess, who, does anybody have questions, comments? Maybe I'll start on my left side if there's anyone. Here, no, okay, how about their side? Okay, thank you, Trustee Gonzalez.
Okay. Hi, good evening, y'all. So I'd like to zoom in on GPM 2.2 on Slide 19. When I look at the MAP data from the spring of '23 and I compare it to the winter data from '23, I see declines in 10 out of the 12 groups that are listed. And so I want to understand the connection between the root cause analysis that's on Slide 7 and the strategies that are targeted towards the specific group that's mentioned in this goal, which is specialized students. So is that enough to get started?
Yes, there is a decline. We do see that as well. I don't think there's any metric reason for that decline. I mean, I think it's a true decline that we're noticing in what we're seeing. And we discussed this last time. The only difference we saw was that in second grade, we changed the assessment. So before, we were giving a K2 assessment, and now we're giving a 2.5 assessment. And NWEA says that the 2.5 assessment is considered to be more rigorous. Now, what was interesting with the reading data was that our reading data looked better for second-grade students, even though they were taking a more rigorous test. But in math, all I can say is maybe the test, that, that could be a factor. Now, I don't have proof to say that the reason the scores are lower are because that assessment switched from a K2 to a 2.5, but that could be one indicator we can be looking at there from a, from a metrics perspective.
Yeah, and Trustee Gonzalez, one of the things that I think that you mentioned that I think is worth exploring a little bit further is, is really intentionality around, you know, what has occurred over the last 10 months, right, in response to the performance that we're seeing. And I do want to acknowledge that the Board and the administration, you know, we've implemented a variety of different things on, in alignment with our values. And we know that these things, when done with fidelity over time, will yield improvement. And so we look back just eight or nine months ago, you know, we didn't have many of the things in place. You heard one of the root causes being, you know, the fact that we've had three different curriculum in the last three years. You think about instructional coaches, we didn't have them last year. We think about just the sheer number of vacancies that we had across the district, and that was, as educators come into the space, having to be able to meet them where they are and provide professional development to, to ensure that it's completed with fidelity. And so the other thing that I would add is, you know, not too long ago, 10 months ago, we didn't have alignment within the organization itself. You know, there were silos within the system to where, you know, academics, you know, things that we knew needed to make into the classroom certainly weren't making it in then. And so now I think we've made the adjustments to ensure that that occurs. But what needs to happen is differentiation. And I think a couple months ago, as Lakisha was presenting, she talked about the fact that, you know, a lot of the schools that serve large populations of underserved student groups, which many of them are presented here, they're focus schools for us, right? We're intentional, we differentiate, we provide the same types of resources across all campuses, but we were hyper-focused in these areas. So I know we can't speak to, to that downward trend, but I could, I do believe that the things we're putting in place over time will ultimately yield an improvement really across the board. I don't know, Patty, are there any things you'd like to add, but?
No, absolutely. This is why we are very invested in, in the model of professional development. And so the just-in-times is just the, the tip of the iceberg. There's an opportunity to really look at the design and say, across departments, these are going to be the key essential elements, right? An opportunity to practice, opportunities for teachers to receive feedback within that moment. But then also, there's a great need for a coaching cycle, a great need for that. Leaders need to have the confidence to go into a classroom and understand what they are observing. And that's part of the professional development for leadership as well. And they also need to be able to have the expertise to sit down and then convey that in, in feedback for the teacher so that then the teacher feels comfortable and then it, you know, the recommendations are spot-on, and it's actually making a difference. So professional development and coaching is really where, you know, we're exploring in our biggest investments.
Thank you. I appreciate the explanation. I would like to understand how we will know. I know you put a quantifiable number on how many teachers have taken advantage of that and how many teachers you think or anticipate are going to take advantage of the next one. How will we know that that coaching is having a quantifiable impact on the outcomes for students?
So multiple layers. We have to identify what the progress measures are in between, right? We, so it, it can be done through instructional rounds and, and observations, but there's also, there also needs to be in between these small units of measurement that, you know, we can decide on the cadence later, but there needs to be small units of measurement. but there needs to be small units of measurement that are occurring consistently across our district so that if something is not working at one particular campus, we know specifically what those adjustments need to be. What we don't want to do, and this is why our Just in Times are differentiated, is to provide one way of doing a practice, right? So we definitely, we want to have the foundations and those essential elements, but we also need to make sure that we're measuring those, those practices as we're seeing them live in the classroom. So that would be part of the observations and feedback, it would be part of the coaching. But then we also need tools in order to measure that so that if we're not seeing progress in students, we're not waiting long periods of time before making these instructional adjustments.
Thank you.
And before we continue on, I do want to mention Jennifer Jones, officially known as JJ. She's our Elementary Director of STEM and one of the positions that was not here not too long ago. And so again, just very much appreciate you participating and joining the team. So thank you very much.
And thank you, and to all of you for letting me be here, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, Trustee Hunter.
Thank you. Good evening Superintendent Segura. Thank you for including the root cause analysis. The first thing I'm going to have is a clarifying question. I'm going to direct you to Page 7, Slide 7, yes, thank you. Is this specific to students accessing sped services or is this representative of Austin ISD at large?
So, Trustee Hunter, I would say generally speaking, at large, but they are true for students that receive special education. I would say it's even exacerbated because the student populations, the vulnerable student populations are going to be impacted to a greater degree if these things aren't truly addressed. And so we spent a lot of time thinking through the different root cause analysis, and there are others in here that we can spend time on. But when it comes down to it, we really felt that the disruption in curriculum, we felt that the past experiences that students had using screens versus manipulatives, we talked about the fact that there were tremendous amounts of vacancies in the system, and all of those things had to really be addressed. And to do it well over time required these types of improvements. So yes, I would say they do apply to special, students receiving special education services, but they also apply to many other students that are identified as historically underserved.
Excellent, thank you. I guess I want to, I'm getting new to root cause analysis and then what comes next. And that's, I'm going to preface that, that's where my question is going. Because what I hear is big and not what's next. And so taking into consideration the root cause analysis and the information that's provided on Slide 5, which is third graders accessing sped services at 14% or on or above grade level, and the information on Slide 6, which is second graders accessing special education services, which we see is at 13% at grade level or above, what are the next steps in the corrective action? Let me preface by saying, the lack of coherence and consistency under that, we said instructional materials, expectation of use, and heavier reliance on digital tools. And in the steps I heard, supplementing with IXL and DreamBox.
So, so one of the things that I would say before I hand it over to the team is, the, you know, we have this slide regarding, that shows a number of students that receive special education services and the fact that almost 80, well, 76% of them are in general education classrooms, right? Which means that we need to support the entire system to ensure that those students receiving those services are getting what they need. And that's why the inclusive model is so important and why making sure that all students are getting what they need, but we differentiate based on need, is critically important. And so the way that we structured this is you have the root cause analysis and you did, we did talk about the change in curriculum and the fact that in years past, back in the pandemic, we didn't have the opportunity to engage with students with manipulatives. Now we have that opportunity. Now, moving forward, you know, we have the resources, we've distributed the resources, we're providing professional development around those resources. And we need to make sure we provide professional development and meet the educator where they are. And then on top of that, we need to make sure that the leaders that are educating and leading these educators, should say, understand what they're observing and can, can coach and provide guidance in real time. And so I think what we're trying to get to is a systematic approach where we are all rowing in the same direction. And so yes, you know, the curriculum has turned over and there are some things that still rely on previous, I would say, tools. But the experience that a student had three years ago of being virtual the entire time is not the experience now. And so I don't know, JJ, if you'd like to expand on that, but that's, that's, and then, so just before I continue off, the elements that were really covered by Dr. Cherry Lee and JJ were really discussing the things that we've been doing over the last 10 months and the things that we talked about that were led by Deputy Superintendent Patty Rodriguez, were things that are underway in a really long-term horizon. Like MTSS, that is a two, you know, 24 to 36-month initiative. It's a significant lift in the system. And so that's, that's how we're going to begin to kind of support the cadence of these presentations. So JJ, if you'd like to?
Thank you. One thing I was going to say about that is in the adoption of the STEM Scopes curriculum, one thing that sets it apart is it's also very systematic, it's very explicit, and the way that the scopes are created. And so it actually also takes our students not only through the 5E model, but it really helps deepen their depth of knowledge throughout as well. And so the teacher tools that are in there, as well as with students interacting hands-on, as long as we're pairing it with that systematic instruction and very explicit in what we're modeling for students and how to take them through that process, it does that. And so I know at our Just in Times that my team creates, they really try to pick those pieces out and showcase that with teachers because, again, as teachers, they're planning all of the things, it's not just math. And so with that, knowing that they have those opportunities already in there, they're not having to go off on their own and try to create lessons that are very explicit to the mathematics being taught. I know we also have a lot of work to keep doing to continue to support our educators as they then go back into their classrooms, as Ms. Rodriguez said, and the follow-up support of what happens there. So I will say a large number of our instructional coaches are also attending these sessions side-by-side with their teachers. But then also, if teachers can't get away or the sub calls in and doesn't show up, the instructional coach has the necessary knowledge, materials, can go back and help turn it around on the campus to support teachers there as well. I know not all of our campuses have instructional coaches, but again, the ones that we have as our high priority campuses or our focus campuses do have instructional coaches. And so we're seeing more and more of them engaging in the professional learning alongside their teachers and then supporting it as they go back to campus.
Okay, so I guess what I'm understanding is STEM Scopes is what we have for our students now. And that's, it's going to go, okay. So in the spirit of my colleague who is absent, this will support emergent bilinguals also?
Yes, 100%. So it, we also not only have tools embedded in that curriculum for really scaffolds for all learners, not even just our emergent bilingual students, but there's also Spanish curriculum, that's the same curriculum available. So like in kindergarten, Spanish is our language of instruction and our dual-language programming for Spanish speakers. And then in first grade, we start with language of instruction being English, but we know that students can't just go off and start in English. And so there are tools in there, already built in there. And then I want to remind everybody of the structured conversations, trainings that we've been doing with our high priority campuses. We've actually had kind of two levels of support for them now with that. And then we've been going in on instructional rounds to see it happening in classrooms. And we've seen it in mathematics and English language arts and Spanish language arts and also in science and really trying to see those best practices and helping leaders of our campuses support teachers through their PLC process of embedding that. And the more we're seeing conversations happening, we're also noticing changes in student thinking and the way that they're interpreting the mathematics or the other curriculum. And so that's another targeted way that we're trying to help our historically underserved students that are at our highest priority campuses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Hunter. Vice President Foster?
No, thank you for the presentation, my questions have been answered.
All right, thank you. Okay. I'll go first since I have it top of mind, if that's all right? Okay, so thanks for this presentation. So I'm really particularly interested, I was really interested in two sets of slides. One was 25 and 26. So we'll start with that. Where you're looking at our students experiencing poverty versus those who aren't by race and ethnicity within special ed. Okay, so there's a stark difference. And we saw that we've been seeing this all along. But there is a stark difference, not only among racial groups, but this really, these two slides, you know, looking at them side-by-side, you can really see the difference between students who are experiencing poverty and students who aren't. So for example, like for our Asian students, it's 39% who are at meets versus 22%. You know, so the first number is those who are non-ecodist versus ecodist. For African-American students, you really see it's 8% who are non-ecodist versus 1%, 1% of our Black students who are in third grade, receiving special education services and are, you know, economically disadvantaged, are on grade level for math. And that's, that's very worrisome. But it's interesting that, like, there's such a gap between 1% and 8%. I mean, it's eight times more. I mean, it's just seven percentage points, but it's still something that's worth noticing. And so you see the trend follow for each of the student, each of the ethnic groups. So I guess my question is, what are the characteristics of the schools where we see our students who are economically disadvantaged? Like, how are the characteristics of those schools different from the characteristics of the schools where most of our non-economically disadvantaged students are? I saw the root cause analysis, but that's part of it. But I'm thinking school level. So I would be really curious to know what your thoughts, I guess, I should ask our superintendent, what you're finding of that.
I'll kick it, I'll start off and then kick it off to Deputy Superintendent Patty Rodriguez. You know, I think it's, it's this, it's this trend that we've seen with an AISD for a very long time. And I think the fact that we're talking about it, we're building systems to address it, is what the work is about. But it goes back to just the trends that you see, you know, whether it's vacancies and teachers, you look at principal turnover, you look at a variety of different things that really impact the learning environment. And that is just compounded when, when it's applied and these, and these student groups are not served in the way that they need to be served. And so I know, Patty, you have, you know, very discreet detailed information around that, but I think unfortunately, it's a trend that we continue to see. And I, and I think the systems that we build out, the invitation plans, have to be focused in these areas, which is why the differentiation that Lakeisha and the team and the conversations we have and the observations, they're really focused in those schools that have large numbers of these student populations.
When I think specifically about our campuses that, that we're talking about, the turnover with our leadership teams and the turnover with our new teachers is, it's, it's, we, it's blaring. I did my own semi-research and just randomly, you know, chose students to, you know, to see and follow sort of like their educational journey from the early grades. And there were lots of students that had first-year teachers in kinder and then in first, and then in second, and then now as a third grader. And that greatly impacts a student. Not to say that we don't have phenomenal first-year teachers, because I've seen them absolutely, but there are learning curves there. Coupled with new leadership teams that also have their own learning curves. And then not having certain systems in place as, as a system in order for them to look for these supports. For example, a coaching model that's district-wide. A new leader definitely would be able to go into a classroom and, and support a teacher, but if they don't have that lens for exactly what is it that I'm looking for? And then how do I determine if I'm going to pick the one to two high-leverage changes and adjustments that we're going to, I'm going to give you as feedback? How do I know that those are the actual right moves to support the teacher in making those moves, right? And so we know that our teachers need to feel supportive from their perspective. We have differentiated the supports for our priority campuses, we will continue to do that. But we also recognize, and I acknowledge, that there are those opportunities there. Again, I keep saying our coaching model, we definitely need one. We need to ensure that our instructional coaches are also, that we're building capacity with them and ensuring that, you know, that they're, that they are also part of the Just in Time trainings. Because whenever the support leaves, we want to make sure that, that the support is going to continue on campus. So those are just a few of those things top of mind. Coupled with all of the other root causes that we have brought up, that creates the condition for a student not having the best learning experience year after year.
I really appreciate that. And I think we have an opportunity as well, just tying this back to our budget conversation, to really, like, we have control, right, as a district? We have control over where we put our teachers, or we could, right? Like, you know, where we decide to put our most experienced principals. And, you know, we have more control than, you know, I realized when I first came on this board. And, and so it's an opportunity. And so I think as we continue in our budget discussions, that is something I want to keep us, like, looping back to is like, what are the characteristics of the schools, right? Like, we're not talking about characteristics of students. Students are who they are and they're lovely beings who are capable of high achievement. It's the schools. And so, so I really appreciate what you said about looking beyond, you know, and like looking at vacancies and, and, you know, the teacher turnover, the leadership turnover. And that's what I'm hoping to understand better as we can, can continue to evolve these board monitoring reports and getting a full sense of like our theory of change. So just, I really appreciate that. And I kind of, I said there were two sets of slides. So the other set of slides is the same thing, but second grade. And that was Slide 29 and 30. Let's see. Sorry, I'm just scrolling down there. Okay, so it's the same thing. The numbers are overall, I mean, you see the same trend. And like, I was kind of shocked to see for second graders, I mean, we had groups of kids that were at 0% if they were economically disadvantaged versus, you know, 40%. Like for Asian, let's take Asian, for example. If you're non-ecodist, you're at 40% meets. But if you're economically disadvantaged, you're at 0. Like, I don't know if it's just a really small popul, like, sample size, like, I don't know, like, what's causing that, but that seems big, like a big deal. Same thing with Black students, 0% versus 8%. And so I, I am just really, you know, in fact, some of the, some of the differences are even larger in second grade. And maybe it's because the test is harder, I don't know what it is. But again, I'm just concerned because as the second graders move up to third grade next year, you know, how do we, how do we hold ourselves accountable to changing the, the school characteristics that we can control? And so that's, I'm, I'm excited for that work and just look forward to the outcomes that will result from that. Thank you. All right, Secretary Boswell?
Thank you for all of that. I'd like to continue with the conversation about Slides 25 and 29. And just, I think it's really, when I look at this, I know we see data for the three of the four-star categories. And I know we've talked about this in a previous monitoring report. We have approaches, meets, and masters, but we don't have does-not-meet. And, and the hidden bar in this column is that more than half of our students on both of those slides, our second graders and our third graders, who receive special education services and experience poverty, are falling into that does-not-meet category. And, and I think it's important to really name that. And I would love to hear your thoughts about that. And I think when we look specifically on Slide 25, that our African-American students in third grade, 91% right now are at does-not-meet. And that's just a staggering number, more than half is a staggering number. More than half is a staggering number, but that's a staggering number. So I would love to know what that does-not-meet data tells you as educators about our, you know, how we're supporting our students this year and for the likelihood of helping them catch up to be successful in future years, since this is that foundation for what comes next.
So overall, when we look at the did-not-meet category, and if we're looking at students experiencing poverty, all of them, if are, are experiencing poverty. When we look at did-not-meets for the whole group, like, so if we look at all students, we see that across the board, about 80% of those students in the did-not-meet category are experiencing poverty. When we look at Black and African-Americans specifically, it goes up to 89%. So, and that's what you're seeing reflected here is that, you know, 91. So it's close to that. And so, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the trend. It's that, and what makes the African-American and Black groups particularly worrying is that it's not just Black and African-Americans experiencing poverty that are showing low performance levels. It's also those that aren't. So that's the only group that consistently has students not experiencing poverty, performing below their peers. We see Hispanic students not experiencing poverty, performing below their peers occasionally, like in second-grade mathematics. And in certain areas, it pops up, but it's not consistent. But among Black and African-Americans, that is a consistent trend across the board. It doesn't matter if they're experiencing poverty or not. They're just consistently performing below their peers as a group. What this tells us overall, I think it goes back to the question Trustee Hunter asked earlier. How do we approach this, right? This problem that we're seeing? And I think the administration is taking a wise approach because they're saying we have triage. And triage is in terms of our 20 prioritized campuses, but we also have a holistic approach for all campuses across the district that includes consistency and coherence. So that we're going to try to stop the bleed early on by focusing on those areas we know that have a large number of students that are experiencing these problems. But then we're also going to improve the system as a whole moving forward. So I think it's that two-tiered approach that, that we're talking about tonight that, that gets at the heart of what Trustee Hunter brought up and, and what you're bringing up right now. So I hope that.
We know that our philosophy as a district is about really interrupting the predictive patterns that have been in place in systems. That educational equity and that lens really informs, it's nested in so many things, to be honest with you, Secretary, Secretary Boswell. We know our students tend to be who, who, in, that are in schools, there are communities who might be experiencing poverty or other factors, that we can address that when we do that in a systematic, thoughtful, and consistent way. And there's a sort of a combination of variables that are in play here. Not only the students experiencing poverty, we, students with disabilities. And so those, not only those high-yield practices, but prioritizing. I think our team members said that we need to address with tenacity that over-serving, it's not really over-serving, it's just serving, where we have had marginalized and underserved communities, and move that from language into action, into implementation. And so this is going to be critically important to the larger system and to our MTSS process and all the other things. But it is very troubling to see those data. And it's also very troubling to see those data and only use inconsistent observational gauges to kind, you know, to kind of see how we're progressing. And so that's part of the intentionality of addressing that through structured conversations. And it's actually good practice for us to see where we are seeing that implementation. You've heard about just-in-time and the concrete modeling to representational modeling. But to hear students speaking about mathematics with stronger academic vocabulary, that is critically important, but that has to be scaffolded. And so it tells us that it isn't one thing. It's, it's about the way the system itself is structured and the opportunity for that prioritization. Not to take for granted when you have, whether it's novice teachers, whether you place different teachers there, our teachers are coming in at different points. Even veteran teachers put their manipulatives away for periods of years and sort of gotten to some different practices. When we know we had beginning teachers who observed their entire student teaching on a screen in their first year in isolation. All of those kinks come into play. And so the first step is alignment around observation in those pieces, in those classrooms. And then at the end of every one of those sessions, we've been on multiple ones with the team, there's a conversation around what is the evidence that you saw around that, that implementation? What are your next steps? How can we, whoever's here at the table, support you and your school structurally in making something different happen? So that you can, and sometimes principals themselves are vulnerable, but I need more practice. Can you come and help me with the facilitation of a PLC structure? Or whatever it might be. I wanted to likewise mention that the strategies that are highly effective, high-yield strategies for students with disabilities likewise are very critically important for our most underserved students. Explicit instruction that really has that opportunity for spiraling with deep academic vocabulary. And so that is part of all of those things working together. And it's allowed us an opportunity to get more and more aligned. But likewise, see in the future MTSS process, not only observations, but checkpoints where we can pivot and really provide targeted supports wherever a student is on the continuum to meet them where they are. So that's exactly why I appreciate the investment, not only in the resources, but in the time and space to make this a priority. Because it's very, very challenging sometimes to not only focus on other metrics, but the real metrics are happening in the classrooms with our students and building capacity and finding those differences with our teachers. One last plug, which is really a connection to you, is where we are very hopeful about additional investments in professional learning days and dollars invested in that are, that are going to be upcoming in this fall. So the manual moves from building in the planning and development around the, the sessions that will occur, and that will not be stopped. We know that one aspect of adult learning is that, that training and development. But that is not happening just in the experience of going through it. It's that ongoing cycle in coaching. So all of those things pulling together help us to row and be more aligned as a system so that we start to see a difference where there might have been some foundational holes for our students that were developed that we can absolutely address.
So, Trustee Boswell, I don't, I'm not going to spend a lot of time, but I do think it's important that we talk about, you know, we talk about poverty. It's, it's outside of our control in a lot of ways. And so a lot of things that we're talking about are in the classroom and it's in our system. But we also can look at, and we'll be looking and continue to look at, different models, rep-around services, enrichment, you know, communities and schools. There's a lot of things that we can do. And the idea is that over time, there's total alignment, right? To where the entire system is supporting our students as, for as much part of the day as we can, and even to the weekends. And so I, what we're talking about here is largely in the classroom and in the system itself. But I, I do want to acknowledge that there are many other things that we as a system can do to support our students, especially those experiencing poverty.
Thank you, Dr. Robinett and Mr. Finan. And thank you, Superintendent Segura, for that. I appreciate that. And I think that gets to my next question, which is the root cause analysis is really helpful to see. And I appreciate the conversation about that. But also going back, it is, it is really classroom-specific. And knowing that we have a, you know, school lunch program because we believe that supports student outcomes and success. We have parent support specialists, and we invested in the academic coaches, you know, all these reasons. And so really would love, look forward to data around that and, and what we know about those supports and how we can best make sure those dollars are spent well. So as part of our conversation about student outcomes, I really look forward to that. You bringing some recommendations to us based on the same level of rigor that we're bringing to the academic piece of it. So thank you for that very much. I have a question about, when we look at all students versus students receiving special education services, the gap for our second graders is much narrower than the gap for our third graders. We know that, that all student performance for our second graders is lower and, and higher for our third graders. And I'd like to understand a little bit more about what you see in that data, what your understanding of, of kind of those whys is and what we need to know about that.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, I don't know why the second graders are performing lower as a group as a whole. The only thing I can point to is what we stated earlier. We know that we switched the test. And NWA says that the tests they're taking this year is more rigorous. So that, that's a possibility. Yeah. In, in terms of like, if we're looking for a metric reason as to why we might see that trend, I think that's the most likely, but I have no way of proving that. I just can point that out as a possible error in that value. Like, this, this value is not the same value as last year because we changed the nature of the assessment.
And do you know why we wouldn't be seeing that same drop for our students receiving special education services in second grade? Do you?
No, there would be no logical explanation for that. Yeah, exactly. I mean, that's partially why I can't say that, that's particularly why. Unless, unless those particular students just, the difference in their performance was more exasperated on that second test, right? So that, that is a possibility. But I'm, I'm not, I don't see those questions. So I, I can't make an evaluation of the, each of those assessments in that way. We, we haven't viewed the questions. We don't know what they're given. And each kid takes a totally different test because it's adaptive. So based on how they answer one question, the next one's different. So it's really hard to make that analysis.
So that's an area of exploration.
Yes.
Just moving forward.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Yeah, that was just such an odd thing to see. So thank you for that. Let's see. I have one more question about the digital tools and talking about that as one of the root causes that, what are we doing to be sure? I'd like to know a little bit more about, about your, what you're seeing in the digital tools and then what we're doing to be sure those are contributing to student outcomes in a meaningful way. So, so can you tell me a little bit more about why you've identified that as one of the root causes and what we need to know about that? Especially as we look ahead to budgeting?
I will, I will start. And I, I heard JJ under, so I will, I will let JJ start at the direction of my superintendent.
I'll start. And then I think Dr. Lee or Dr. Robinett has something too. One thing I will say is, and I haven't been here very long, but we've quickly realized that we have a lot of digital support tools being utilized at our campuses and not necessarily consistency of those. So one that we definitely use in elementary is Dreambox, which is a great supplement. But these supplemental digital resources have to be paired with explicit teacher-led instruction. And sometimes that's the gap that we're trying to fill, is how do we take the digital data and actually do something instructionally with it to impact students? Because they're engaging, they have avatars, there's great things on there. But if we're not keeping track of how students are progressing on it or knowing how to move their pathways, sometimes they can just get stuck. Or it can appear that they're doing well and progressing, but maybe the numbers aren't showing that. So as a growth area for us, I know we're going to be reevaluating the use of digital resources in the district. And we're going to really try to narrow the focus to something that we know is extremely evidence-based and that teachers can use so that we can tailor our professional learning around that digital platform. But how it pairs with our core instruction and how we should utilize the data we receive from it to further impact our students. And of course, we have a lot of students we need to impact with that. And I'll let Dr. Lee continue on.
I would, I would say that's the, oh, no, not continuing. Definitely, I think the usage of the digital tools is variable. And again, it is supplement to the core. So the core is that first teach from the teacher, and then these digital tools are supplement. Something that, like, we see even variability within, in a single classroom. So certain groups of students that may be fast finishers or completing their work are using that tool. And other students that need additional support or taking longer may not have the same access. So even looking at that level of use in the class and making sure that kids do have an opportunity, because one, it's motivating. And two, there is research base that shows that practice on digital tools with math builds calculation-influency skills as well.
Thank you all very much. And JJ, welcome. Glad you're here. And that's it for me.
Trustee Sapata? Okay. Has your question already been addressed? Okay. Thank you. Trustee Lugo.
Thank you all. Thank you, Superintendent. I don't know why. I've been up since like four, so I'm like, kind of exhausted. But this has been really interesting. Sorry, I wanted to mention one thing. Superintendent, you had kind of brought back to our attention, right? Like, some of the things that are outside of the school district's control. And yet, you know, how we partner with local community organizations. And I think you mentioned, or I'm not sure who mentioned lunch, right? Like, that we provide meals. And I don't know how many folks know, or maybe this might be something that doesn't necessarily bubble up, but might be worth just noting, is breakfast in the classroom for some of our campuses? I mean, again, it may not necessarily seem like that would have an impact, but it really does. And so I don't know if you wanted to touch on that and just, again, the kind of collaboration and like the systemic thinking across the district and how all of those pieces connect, right? How many tools do we have available to our teachers? Are we feeding our kids? Can we feed our kids? Who are we feeding, right? Like, all of that.
No, Trustee Lugo, you bring up a really good point. And it's one of the things we talk, we've talked about. We talked about just earlier today, I think, about, you know, wherever our students are, we need to meet them there. You know, and, and many of our students may not have had a, a full meal. Maybe didn't get a great night's sleep. There are a lot of things that we, as an organization, can provide along their academic day. And that's why when I talk about every single person being an educator, from the bus driver who may see that student at six in the morning, all the way to the custodian that may see them out the door, like, they all need to be in tune with the needs of that student. And so food in the classroom or breakfast is absolutely an opportunity for us. And we often talk about even, you know, summer enrichment programs or even opportunities over the weekend. Like, anytime they're in our facilities, we have opportunities that we might not have otherwise. And so really leveraging these resources that are, you know, community resources to support education. And so you're going to continue to see us find those opportunities. I think as we move along and the team kind of comes together and aligns with the initiatives, you'll see a lot of those initiatives and, and kind of resources be committed to those initiatives kind of come to fruition. But that's absolutely a great opportunity.
And then, so that also makes me think about some of what's been mentioned as well, like investment of time, investment of energy. I'm glad you mentioned the custodian. One of my kiddos in elementary said that his favorite person on campus is a custodian. And he literally said, I don't remember when he said, maybe last week sometime. He said, "Yeah, every time so-and-so sees me, he always gives me a high five. Like, he really makes my day." And so the reason I bring that up is, right, like, it's all ecosystem. But that requires money. And, you know, so I, I think we're going to be faced with a lot of really tough choices. And the more information and feedback that we get based on what, what are the root causes? What are the things that are being implemented? So I guess my overall question is, you know, is there anything else that y'all collectively, the administration, thinks that we should know as we start to have those conversations around budget? And what we're trying to also accomplish, given these, given the challenges that we faced post, during the pandemic, post-pandemic, and the catch-up that we're having to do as a system?
You know, I, I think we, I mean, y'all as a board and certainly the administration over the last, you know, many years, and I think it's really improved, is just recognizing that some students, some school communities need additional resources, right? And that's the equitable approach that we're going to take in everything that we do. And we get to be disruptive. You know, as President Singh said, like, we're the system. Like, we are the system. We, you know, I talk about it all the time in our, in our meetings. Like, we get to do things and make decisions that impact the entire ecosystem within AISD. And we have to take that responsibility and do something with it and do something disruptive. And so I think as we move through the budgeting process, you know, as we talked about, wherever we add, we're probably going to have to look at cutting. And that's okay. We just have to recognize that it's a commitment from this organization that we're going to commit to those students who've been historically underserved in an effort to, to move them in a direction that'll ultimately improve outcomes and, and, you know, help them be the best version of themselves and great humans, right? I mean, that's what we really want at the end of the day. And so in exchange for that, there may be adjustments or cuts. And whenever we do that, we also have to be really intentional. What is this adjustment going to do? Because I think in the past, we have made some adjustments and we didn't realize that that one thing that we didn't, we decided not to do actually had this other impact and this other impact and ultimately impacted the classroom adversely. And so I think you're going to see us be really focused on whatever we bring to you as far as recommendations both ways. And whatever we do, our hope is that it aligns with the values of this organization, aligns with our goals, and certainly aligns with the needs of our historically underserved students.
Okay. Thank you all. Okay, thank you all. Trustee Whitley Chu.
So I wanted to ask if there is anything currently happening or strengths that we want to highlight that maybe isn't reflected in the data or something that we're not seeing right now?
I feel like I'm hogging the time, okay. I definitely think there's a lot of strength and again, I've been here a very short time, but definitely out and about in the schools, which is where the magic happens. We have so many educators that are just really forming strong relationships with students and setting a foundation in their classrooms to where we create a safe space to implement and try strategies with kids that they may not be as used to or that the teacher themselves is not as comfortable with, but they've laid that strong foundation. So our students are excited about learning, you know, we're trying to continually up the engagement to make sure every single student is interacting with the instruction happening in the classroom in some way. And we've had this great vantage point to see amazing classrooms, amazing first-year teachers in action that maybe are or aren't from a teacher certification program that are being supported. Amazing leadership that's really pushing the bar on some of the things they're trying at their campuses because they know they have huge movement to make. So I think also, I'll just be selfish for a minute. My team in a very short time has been very accepting and is really excited about the work ahead. And speaking for someone who looks at these numbers a lot and we know we have a long way to go, they're ready. They're so ready for the work ahead and the things we know we need to do to help support teachers to ultimately impact student outcomes. So there's a lot to celebrate.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you, all right. Yes, yes.
So I was wondering, so are the sped students also included in after-school program opportunities and other programs within the campus?
May I? Thank you for that question, trustee Sapata. Absolutely, that's part of our our improvements in philosophy for include more inclusive models. So we talked about students in general core instruction and then that extends throughout the throughout the school day and thereafter. There's always room for us to have greater and greater improvements and that is part of entering into that conversation, sharing data and likewise working in partnership with our agencies to develop greater and greater understanding of all of our students' needs to create those conditions for and inclusive practices. The excitement that we see in partnership in the classrooms that JJ had alluded to as well and and in our after-school programs is when we have the right scaffolds and supports, then all students, it's part of universal design, can really flourish and have tremendous talents that when tapped into in the right way can really bring those to life. And so that's part of the the practice that we're working on. I won't tell you that's 100% perfect yet by any means, but that's absolutely part of our overall view of the guiding principles of inclusion as well as the work that starts in partnership in the academics team and the schools team and in each and every one of our campuses.
All right, any other questions from trustees? Okay, so thank you for this productive conversation, really appreciate the presentation. So now we must vote on whether or not we will accept this monitoring report. As a point of clarity, we are voting to accept this report as a formal acknowledgement that we had a satisfactory conversation with the superintendent and have a deeper understanding about how the current reality for students lines up with our vision for them. So at this point, I will entertain a motion for the acceptance of this monitoring report.
I move to accept the monitoring report.
All right, is there a second? All right, trustees, is there any discussion on this item? All right, so having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Sapata to accept the monitoring report, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, trustees. All right, so we're not going to move on to the consent agenda. I would like to ask that we pull item 9.5 for a separate vote and receive consultation with our legal counsel before voting on that. So is everybody cool with that? That's the formal language. Trustees, are there any other consent items anyone would like to pull for separate vote? Okay, so, all right, so the only one that we're pulling is 9.5. So Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, I make a motion to approve consent agenda items 8.1 and 8.2, 9.1 through 9.4, 9.6 through 9.10, 10.1 through 10.4 and 11.1.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, trustees, is there any discussion on any of these consent items? All right, so having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Sapata to approve consent items, 8.1 and 8.2, 9.1 through 9.4, 9.6 through 9.10, 10.1 through 10.4 and 11.1. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So before we move to items for separate vote, the board, like I mentioned earlier, will adjourn into a brief executive session in order to obtain legal counsel on the remaining items item. We will, and this is return, this is again regarding 9.5, which is consider adoption of an order authorizing the issuance, sale and delivery of AISD's unlimited tax school building bonds. So we will return soon to complete our vote. So thank you for your patience. So we will now recess the open meeting at 8 o'clock PM and move into exec session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, 551.0821 and 551.071. We will be as as brief as possible. So thanks for your patient patience, we'll see you soon. All right, so thank you all for your patience. We will now reconvene in open open session at 8:52 PM. We will now move to the item that was pulled from the agenda, was agenda item 9.5. Do we have a motion to approve item 9.5?
Yes, I move to approve item 9.5, consider adoption of an order authorizing the issuance, sale and delivery of Austin Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds in one or more series, levying a continuing direct ad valorem tax for the payment thereof, authorizing certain authorized officials to approve the amount, interest rates, price and terms thereof and certain other procedures and provisions related thereto and containing other matters related thereto.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Sapata to approve item 9.5. Are there any questions or comments related to this? Sure. Trustee Hunter?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the presentation. I just still have some information and be gentle with me. The first question is, so that I can fully understand, when the firms that you will select, what is their charge?
So the firms are charged with helping the district sell bonds in the municipal market. So they're in charge of looking at and calling on investors, letting them know that our bond sale is about to go in the market and make sure they they bring in orders for that bond sale. The more orders that the syndicate brings in, that allows the district to reduce or buy down our interest costs. And so that's the goal of the overall sale.
So for us everyday people, this is what our voters voted for.
Right.
Right, that 2.44 billion, it's a piece of that is saying, hey, this is how we're going to actually go and get the money to do these things that you've tasked us to do.
That's correct.
That's my understanding, that's how much I've learned. I've read so many things today, I promise you. And so then my next part of that is we're going to, the board is, actually, can I pause with you and just ask a question of our attorney for a second? Ms. Pedia, remind me again what the the board's responsibility is at this point?
The board's responsibility, that what the board is being asked to do is to approve an order and the order constitutes a delegation of authority, which basically means your administration is going to, and Ed is about to explain to you, authorize various already previously approved organizations to sell bonds. So you, the board, are not selling the bonds, you, the board, are not choosing, that's our the vendors, I guess, Ed, you've already been selected, right? So it's a matter of the apportionment, I think, is that those are the details that Ed's going to give you. You simply are allowing this to go forward.
Okay, so now you can walk us through.
So when the board approves a bond order, that authorizes the authorizing officials, which is myself and our superintendent, to begin putting together the bond sale team. We also use the help of our financial advisors, which the board also approved tonight. And then we determine the liabilities that each of these firms will be subject to. And so as part of this sale, at minimum, every firm will be liable for the co-managers 10%. And so that is their liability, which means that when the sale actually occurs, they should at least bring in 10% of the overall selling orders. Many times, these firms bring in a larger amount than that. And then again, that allows us to really buy down our interest rates and have a successful day in the market.
Okay. Processing, all that. So we had, we had, I like the word syndicate, right? How many is in that?
So we have a syndicate that was awarded when we passed the 2022 bond program. We have 25 firms on that list. On a normal bond sale like this one, we choose between six and seven firms. Because this is such a large sale, it's $800 million, we will be using seven firms. Of those seven firms, we do, we did look at experience, their expertise in the market, also their diversity. And so two of the seven are actually minority-owned. We have a Mexican-American-owned firm and a black-owned firm as well.
Okay, so they're part of the smaller group that's going out this time?
So one of the firms, one of the minority firms is a co-manager, which is one of the smaller percentages. And then one is actually a lead on the deal.
Okay, okay, thank you. That, you answered my question. I was just like, what is the experience and reputation? Can you just explain? Good. I recently asked you a question because I wasn't clear about our hub program. I really, like, I know that we have these historically underutilized business, I myself am one, not with AISD. But try to understand, like, how do we, we have these numbers where we want to, we want to have, that's our, what am I trying to say? That is our district's vision and values that we utilize these businesses that are underutilized traditionally.
That's correct.
And I had asked you about a particular, I think it was goods and services. You were like, we don't actually have numbers, even though that's part of what we want to do, it's not specific. So on the bond side, we do have that?
So the the hub program specifically works with the actual construction, the bond program side. A bond sale that's paid for out of debt service, that's not to say that we don't incorporate the district's values when we choose our bond sale team. So as part of a bond sale, you have your underwriting firms, your bankers, you have your attorneys and then you have your financial advisors. And so in Austin ISD, we do have minority, a minority-owned financial advising firm. We do have a minority-owned bond counsel as part of our team. The underwriting counsel, we will have a minority-owned firm there. And then we do have two underwriting firms as part of our team as well. So we we do incorporate our values in our bond sales.
Okay, um, oops, that's not touchscreen. I think that was my my last question, I just want to be sure. Yeah, that was my last question. Thank you very much. Can I reserve if I? Thank you.
All right, any other trustees have questions or comments? Yeah. Vice President Foster.
I wanted to, I haven't been able to pull it up. Thank you for, I I asked a question in the trustee tracker about standards, a rubric, looking to know in particular whether when the district sort of has to go outside the district to secure third parties to to complete some services, do we have standards? Do we apply those standards according to a rubric in order to make decisions? And I don't have it in front of me, but you gave me a lengthy list that I think is public of the things that are considered.
Correct.
Anytime we're going to make big decisions, I need, we have a responsibility to know that that's that those are in place, that's our governance role. I don't think our governance role goes beyond that to weighing in on who should get what once you all apply your standards by virtue of, you know, through a rubric. So I'm kind of okay in in that area. I understand that we have a sort of team of underwriters, as we've said. Can you help flesh out how this works in terms of a sort of distribution of work? Is there a lead and then subs or how's the how's the work distributed?
So for for any bond sale, especially one of this size, when we're selling $800 million, there's usually a senior manager, which is the the one that kind of manages the rest of the underwriting team. For a sale this large, we also have a co-lead, a co-senior. And then we have the the co-managers, which are the rest of the underwriting firms that that we choose through. It's probably a year-long process is what it takes. We go through interviews, we look at case studies, past performances, not only with the district, but in other districts. We look at the experience of not only the bankers, but the underwriting desks. Are they in compliance with Senate Bill 13 and Senate Bill 19, which the Texas Attorney General looks at very closely before they approve bond sales? So it's a a lengthy group of data points that we look at before we determine which underwriting team to choose.
As the lead?
As the lead, yes.
So we have been, and I'm struggling a little bit with the language because I don't want to use terms inappropriately, but we've been, for lack of a better word, lobbied pretty heavily with a note of there might be something wrong here that needs to be looked into. Any community member that's going to come to me saying that there's a potential wrong, then, you know, I definitely feel an obligation to to ask some questions. But in the questions that were asked of me to look into and the lobbying that came from a number of different people, one of the assumptions that seemed to be out there was the particular firm that was calling was not included in this process. So when we talk about the distribution, and I don't know if it messes us up in our bond ratings and this and that and the other when our realities of money become public, but I think our realities of money need to become public. 100% of work, this work is going to be distributed. I've placed my emphasis on the wrong side of the label. As this work is distributed, can you sort of give like rough percentages? And then align those rough percentages to dollar amounts that we're talking about here?
Right. So for the most part, leads, the percentages can be between 30 to 40%. The co-lead, 20 to 25%. And then the co-managers, 8 to 10%. For our specific deal, the the minimum, the co-managers would receive 10%. As far as being included in the process, we do go and meet with potential firms that we are interested in bringing onto the syndicate or the cell group. And so every firm that is on the list that will be part of our bond sale, we did meet at minimum three times during the year. And so we did receive information, we did hear from every firm and we did receive their case studies, looked at all of the data that they provided for us, any ideas that they had with regards to how we can maximize our our bond sale and our interest in the investment market. And so every firm that we will include in this cell, we did interview and meet with them on a regular basis.
So when you say, so we had 2.44 billion that we started with. These bonds are being kind of sold off in large chunks. This particular chunk is 800 million. So when you say 30 to 40% of the work, are we talking about they're selling 30 to 40% of the 800 million?
So they, yes, so they have at minimum a liability. So what that means is during the bond sale, if, let's say, it's not a good day in the market, the bond sale, if, let's say it's not a good day in the market, they have committed their capital that if our bonds remain unsold, then the firms that have the 30% stake must take down 30% of the bonds. The firms that have 10% of the stake have to take, to buy 10% of the bonds. So that ensures that our bond sale is successful at the end of the day. And so as these firms are brought onto the syndicate, they do commit that capital. And so that's another area that we look at, is that every firm that we choose has the capital capability to buy down our bonds if we have, if the market does not cooperate with us.
So you distributed the risk among all these folks, they all are kind of on the hook and have a really huge financial responsibility. I imagine they get paid to do this.
That's correct.
When somebody gets, say, 10%, can you give us a rough sense of how much money their firm brings in?
It depends on the actual sale, but we could be talking between $300,000 to $500,000 per firm, as far as the co-managers are concerned.
All right, so the, the minimum we're talking about here is, say that again?
300,000 to 500,000.
So somewhere between 300,000 and 500,000 is what the lowest-
The profit, yes.
Paid firm, compensated firm is going to get for this.
Correct.
And Seabert, Williams, Schenk and Company is one of the firms.
That's correct.
At this point, they are one of the people on our list, they are slated to be included in this 800 million and this, this series of work. So the least they stand to make is 300,000 to 500,000.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, trustee, any others?
Yeah, how much will remain of our bond unsold after this sale? This is our second round of sales.
This is, this is our second sale. So the first sale, we, we did sell 600 million. This sale is 800 million. So now we're looking at 1.2 million out of the 2.4, so we will have 1.2 million, 2 billion remaining.
Thank you. And we'll go through this process again, the mix of firms, the approving, giving you the authority.
That's correct.
When it's time to sell more, at least once.
That's correct. And, and our plan currently is to go out for a bond sale on a yearly basis to match our construction cash flows. Usually, we, we go in January, but because our projects are going to start ramping up this summer, we decided to delay it a few months, and that's why we're going in March.
Thank you.
Any other trustees have questions or comments?
Clarification, clear question.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
To clarify, what you were speaking with trustee Boswell, how many more times will we go out?
So we have an estimated three more times to go out.
Okay. You don't know the numbers now, you'll decide then, but you said the, the sub, sum total was left over from after this one is?
1.2 billion.
1.2 million and probably-
Billion.
Billion, I'm sorry. I'm a teacher. We already talking big numbers. Like, I'm used to like 50,000, right? Family of four. So billions of dollars. And then three more opportunities. Do you, again, our values and diversity, so you will rotate through, or you just look at, just go back and, I won't say draw straws, but you say, okay?
So we do, our practice is to rotate the syndicate. And so after every sale, we look at the performance of the underwriters, because we will look at that performance in the next bond sale and give other firms an opportunity to lead the deal.
Okay, I'm learning so much. So basically, I'm going to sum it up, and you tell me if I'm even close, because I really like, I really need to know what I'm, I'm not turning over because that's not my job, but what I'm saying, go ahead with, is what we're doing. So we have this bond, we're going out for this bond, there is a group of firms. There is a senior?
Senior.
A co?
Co-senior.
And then?
Co-managers.
Co-managers. They accept a risk based on their percentage, and so we don't lose, right?
That's the goal, yes.
That's the hope, and I need to make sure we don't lose. Okay, so, and in this case, you said in the group, we had some diversity in our firms.
Correct.
So at least one was woman-owned?
Yes.
One, is it the same? Like, give me the breakdown so I don't get it wrong.
So one is black woman-owned, one is Mexican-American owned, and then we have the rest of the, the team.
Oh, so.
The, the underwriting team.
Okay, the, the underwriting team.
Yeah.
Okay. And then they will go to market, for lack of a better word. If we have a good day, it all works out, everybody wins, win. If they don't, we still win. That's the important part for our students.
Right.
Okay, then we will build and then do this again, oh lovely, all over again.
Correct.
And then you will, the, you'll like kind of do a progress report and say, or grade.
Right.
And then choose again that opportunity.
Correct.
All right. I will be honest with you. The reason I have so many questions is because community members were coming and, and talking with me.
Yes.
And you and I had a conversation about the hub program and our aspirational numbers and how in some areas we're not meeting those. So it is my desire that we meet those needs.
Right.
Within my lane of governance, to encourage you to do those decisions. And I think that that's one of the things that's been very concerning for me, is to make sure that our values are being distributed and everything. Like, it's not just today, right here in front of the cameras. Our values are happening, not that there's back rooms, but even in back rooms, our values are happening. So that's why I'm asking the question.
Correct.
So that when I vote, I know what I am voting for, I know what I am voting about, and I know, I feel good about that vote. So I just want to thank you for answering all my questions and giving me some clarification.
Welcome.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right, so having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Zapata to approve item 9.5, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So this ends, thank you, Ed, this ends the regular business for tonight's meeting. Our last public item tonight is a budget retreat with Lone Star Governance coach Ashley Paz, who will be joining us by Zoom. So for this retreat, the board will move to the floor to allow for a more conversational layout. So this will also be streamed and live broadcast. So if you're interested in hearing more about budget, please tune in. In order to allow staff to transition, we will go into executive session for a few minutes while the staff prepares the meeting room. So we'll then come back to the retreat and open the session. So we will now recess the open meeting at 9:12 PM and move to exact session pursuant to Texas Government Code, sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, 551.0821, and 551.071. Thank you very much. Okay, so we will now reconvene the meeting at, the open meeting at 9:45 PM. The board will now start our budget workshop with Lone Star Governance coach Ashley Paz, who is zooming in. This is an opportunity for the board to ask questions that they hope to see reflected in future budget presentations and documents, and ensure our work is focused around the anchor of student outcomes. So we have scheduled 75 minutes for this workshop. It may not take that long, but we will definitely do a hard stop at 75 minutes. So Ashley, I think you're around here somewhere. Do we have her connected on Zoom? Okay, great. So when she comes, she will do our little workshop, and then I have a little jam board activity for us to do to kind of collate some of the questions that we have for the administration.
Great. Hi, can you see me? Can you hear me?
Hey, Ashley.
Am I, am I here?
Great to see you. Thank you for being here.
Hi, it's good to see everyone tonight. So I am super excited about tonight's conversation. This is one of, like, the biggest things that the school board does, is adopt the budget. And in a student outcomes-focused governance framework, such as Lone Star Governance, it's really important to understand what the board's role is in adopting the budget. I'm going to throw out a question to the board. I'm going to ask you to kind of go back to that very first training that we had together. And we've talked about it a little bit since, but I know we talked about it then. And that is what we call boardwork. Can anyone remind me how we define what boardwork is?
Work done by the board?
Work done by the board?
Do you mean, as opposed to like the student outcomes-focused governance work?
So, so in, in Lone Star Governance, we actually define, we have a specific definition for boardwork, for the work of the board. And there are three buckets that the work of the board falls into. One, the first bucket is around your student outcome goals. The second bucket is around your constraints for the superintendent. And the third bucket is around all of the things that are legally required, all of the things that are required by law. And so one of the reasons that we, that we specify this is because we really do try to drive home that the school board exists to represent the vision and the values of the community. The only way that you can actually do this is by first talking to the community and getting really clear about what those vision and values are, which you're currently in the process of doing. And then you take what you've learned after those conversations, and you adopt student outcome goals that represent the, that's how you represent the vision of the community. And you adopt constraints, which is how you represent the values. You also have, so that, that really is like the main work of the school board, is representing the vision and values of the community. But that's not the only work that the board has. You also have all of the things that are required by law. And these are the types of things that we usually rattle off, we talk about, when anyone really talks about what school boards do. These are going to be things like hiring and evaluating the superintendent, and levying taxes, and authorizing bond sales, which you just did. And really, what we're going to talk about tonight is one of the big buckets of legal requirements that falls to the board, and that is adopting the annual budget. And this is really critical piece of Lone Star Governance. So as I mentioned, your role is, so you have all of the legal requirements, and then you also have, but you still represent the vision and values of the community. Those two things are not opposed. They should not be considered in opposition of each other. In fact, in all of the work that you do around your legal requirements, each, each one of those things is an opportunity to dig in on how you represent the vision and values of the community. The way you talked about the bond sales tonight is actually a really great example of that. You talked about what the values are of your community. You talked about the way that you try to, that you have set an expectation of the types of vendors that you work with, and you want to increase the, your hub utilization and ensure that equity exists within your procurement processes and the people who you are working with, which is an excellent example of, of how this work really has lived for this board. And so in the same way, the budget is another opportunity to do that. And this really is a critical piece of the work in Lone Star Governance. So there are a couple of things about what the, I think, the, the general, like, the society thinks about the, the budget and the way that boards interact with the budget. And then there is the, the effective way that boards can interact with the budget. And so I know my, I will speak to my experience, because I've never observed this board go through a budget workshop before. So my experience, when I served on my school board, a lot of hours were spent deliberating that, all of the different programs and strategies and inputs that were going into creating the budget. Board members were talking about PEP projects and things that made individual stakeholders happy within the budgeting process. And they ensured that they were able to meet the needs of specific parts of the community. But that was a process that didn't always ensure that equity was living throughout the community. And so one of the things that we did when we adopted Lone Star Governance was really had a deliberate conversation about what this process would look like. And boards who have gone through the process of adopting the, the budget through the Lone Star Governance lens, really has, one of the key pieces, the feedback that we get is that this really is a lower-stress way of doing the work. And it is more, that they're able to really live into their values that they have set. And so we'll go back really quickly to the board's role and the superintendent's role. So you have the superintendent who, who comes up with all of the different priorities that are the different strategies that need to exist. Superintendent decides what the inputs are, all of the resources and strategies that go into the educational program. The budget is really the plan that lays that out. This is how the superintendent tells the board, this is how I'm going to implement our educational program in this next year. And so for boards that have adopted goals and who have adopted constraints, their main role in the budgeting process is to be very clear with the superintendent that their number-one priority for resource allocation should be accomplishment of the goals and honoring of the constraints. Now, right now, you are all in a, this is kind of a transitional year. You know, Superintendent Segura has been in the seat as the interim for, for a full year and is now taking over the position permanently, which is great. And so a lot of the things that he has done in the last year's interim are, is, that is what is going to set you all up for success, to see that alignment happen more quickly than you might otherwise see. So for most boards, we say that they can expect to see full alignment between the budget, the expenditure of resources, the allocation of resources. So full alignment between the budget and achievement of the goals, generally within two or three years. It's typically longer for boards that are coming from a space of not having any adopted goals, not having any adopted constraints, and really not having that focus in the past. Your board is not in that position, so you can't expect to see that alignment happen more quickly. But it, it should be expected that in this first year of adopting the budget, it will not be fully aligned yet. But then over, over the course of the next year or two, you can see that alignment fall more into place. And so your main, your main job with adopting the budget is to look at the, look at the plan that is presented to you through a critical lens. Don't, don't, and this is going to be tough for this board, because I know we all love our superintendent, but really, don't give the benefit of the doubt. We want you to start from the expectation, from the assumption that it is not aligned, and then be convinced how, how it is aligned. So have the superintendent convince you, this is how I am going to achieve your goals with this plan, with this budget over the next year. When boards go into this conversation with that perspective, the end result is always the best thing that can possibly happen for kids. So I know that we've only got 75 minutes, so I'm going to stop right there and open it up for questions before transitioning over to, or just switching over to the superintendent.
All right. Guys have any questions for Ashley? Okay. This is really helpful, Ashley. I'm sure we'll have questions as we go through the process. So thank you so much. And so I guess we'll just kind of transition to our little activity. So what I wanted to do was give us an oppor, this is, you know, the second time this group is passing a budget, but I think last year probably we were sort of in a different space, you know? And we have an opportunity right now to really continue improving the way we do our budget. And I think as a team of 10, one of the things that, one of the reasons I wanted- I wanted to have this, this little session now was to give us the opportunity to share with the administration kind of the top questions that we want to have answered in their budget presentations and materials when they present to us, so that we're not having to do a lot of back and forth, a lot of tracker questions. Let's just have the conversation with all of us in one room. And not to mention, like, as Ashley said, passing the budget is, is a really important thing that we do. The Texas Education Code requires that we provide fiduciary oversight, so we owe it to ourselves and to our students to kind of engage in this. One thing that Ashley mentioned, I think you, I copied this from one of Ashley's slides, but I wanted to just kind of bring it up here again. So LSG states that the board has an obligation to the community to ascertain the level of alignment of the budget to the achievement of the board's adopted student outcome goals and adherence to adopted guardrails. And so like, this is how you properly ensure that your priorities are adequately resourced. So, with that in mind, this retreat is really an opportunity for us to share what type of information or evidence that you would need as a, as a voting trustee from the administration to demonstrate that the budget aligns with our adopted goals, guardrails, and values. Does that make sense? So Jacob actually emailed us a link for a Jamboard, which is an online tool. It's kind of like a, it's kind of like doing our post-it activity, but more efficient. It's online, so I don't know if everybody, Ophelia, I actually took your questions that you already submitted and added them already beforehand, so you don't have to actually go through that unless you want to add some more. But I think everybody has a laptop, so check your email. Click on your little link, and it will take you to this lovely Jamboard. And you can see the mine are in yellow, Ophelia's are in green. The question is at the top, and just use the color. It's good to punch, I don't think Jamboard, like, I had to type in my name, so just put your name in there too, just for that, just so it's easier for the administration if they want to follow up with you. What are you trying to tell me, Jacob? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm happy to. What do I need to do? Share. I will adjust the access. Thank you. It should be, and, oh shoot, sorry, editor. Now you guys are all editors. Thank you. So, yeah, so take a few minutes. I would say probably no more than five Post-its would be good. And then we, and as you're seeing what people put on here, feel free to start grouping them. And the reason I'm using this tool is because I wanted the administration to already have everything digitally, so that you guys could just have this as a resource as well. So I'll give you guys a few minutes to do that.
Ashley?
Ashley, I have a question. Yes, ma'am. There we go. I have a question. So, the question that we have here says, you know, what do you need from, somebody just put a Post-it over the question. What do you need from the administration that would show the budget aligns with our adopted goals, guardrails, and values? Are guardrails the constraints? They are. Okay, and goals? The goal, that, we have temporary goals right now. So, we're building a budget on those goals? Yeah, so that's, that's really, I mean, what you have, what you have to work with is, so the goals that you have right now is what you have to work with. Okay. So the good thing, the good thing about the goals that you have is that they are, so the actual topic of the goals is unlikely to change, or the main, the main idea of the goals. So you know that whatever you adopt in the spring, you're going to adopt something around third grade math. You're going to adopt something around third grade reading, and you're going to adopt something on CCMR. And so, you know that that is going to be a good starting point for you. And you can look at your constraints, and you can generally, so you don't know what your community is going to come back with in their feedback. And so, it is absolutely possible that they could come back with some, some values that are just not what you expected. However, that is unlikely. This board has spent a lot of time talking to the community in the last year, and I feel like you are very in tune with what your community wants. This is more of a gut check that you're going through right now with your community engagement than a starting from scratch. So, you have a general idea. You can look at your current constraints and say, all right, these are the things we have now. Which ones are we likely to keep, and which ones are we likely to abandon? And really lean into the ones that you are most likely to maintain. And then the superintendent, or just the, the conversation that you have around those is one that you all can, I will leave for you all to have with the superintendent. Thank you. Of course. I know, they're really small. I was just thinking that. But I'm going to do this and see what happens. If I go over here and go to... Yeah, because even if you go down to 25%, they don't give you the better. I'll be putting the one. Just click it. It is just a text box. It is just a text box. You don't get so many characters. It's like a damn tweet.
I'll give you guys another minute. I'll give you guys another minute or so to finish up, and you can still continue to add to this, but to save time, we can then start our discussion.
Okay, my thing like disappeared. It disappeared. Let's try it again. Test. Okay, there's the test.
Okay, so y'all can put the finishing touches on the box you're working on, the post that you're working on. And I thought we could have a little discussion if you guys want to just, if y'all want to share just one or two points that you think might require more clarification for the administration. And then I think as we're doing this, if folks want to kind of group these into things, like as we're kind of, anyone, and I think all of you guys have the ability to move these around. So feel free to just kind of group them as you wish, as folks are talking. But does anybody want to start off and just kind of share? You don't have to share all of your Post-its, but if there's anything that you feel like you want to raise up. Is your mic on?
So, I'd have to do all mine, redo them all. So the allocation of staff to campuses, that there's, the allocation of staff to campuses is going to meet, support the needs of that campus. And where that comes from is that I'm hearing in the, in the schools that there's not enough office staff to do all the work. Sometimes there's just one clerk assigned to do a lot of things, so it's hard for them to stay on top of attendance and enrollment and a lot of things that come to the front office. So, so based on the number, like if a school has 200, they all have the same amount of staff, where the bigger schools don't have that extra support. If they have 500 kids, they're 1,000 kids. So, so seeing that we have the adequate number of staff to support our, our needs there and at each campus. Makes sense?
Yep, that makes sense. Thank you. And that would probably tie back to, well, it's one of our constraints from our previous scorecard, which is about school climate. Partially, it would probably link back to help support that as well. Creating a welcoming climate with staff that have the bandwidth, you know, if there's enough staff, they have the bandwidth to do that. That's helpful. Okay, anyone else want to share?
Not specifically about mine, but I see a theme here of wanting evidence to explain why we're investing and what we would be cutting, and really understanding, not throwing something at the wall because we think it's going to work, but really understanding what data we have to justify that and what research we have to back up our choices. Looking at specifically at the impacts of cuts or investments on students.
Yeah, that's a big one. I know, I feel like I asked something similar, and I think a couple other people probably did too. It's, yeah. For sure. All right, anyone else? Kevin the somber?
I don't know how to change that, because I wasn't done. I was being, I was being very serious in that moment.
Just click on it again.
Talk about the teacher one.
Just double-click on it. It'll open back up.
Um, what was the teacher one? Was it what, was it, was it my thoughtful, dignified, or smart?
I don't recall.
Huh?
Mm hmm.
So one thing I was interested in was, was class size implications of different decisions, especially for spec classrooms, as we're making decisions and spec classrooms seem to be growing. Is there a budgetary piece of that? Another one was, oh, the ways in which we're, our budget reflects incentivizing expert teachers in our highest needs spaces, if there's a way to have tangible demonstrations of that. I think that was my most important one, stuff that has to do with getting the expert teachers into the right places.
Yep. And that was something that we talked about today.
Yeah.
And the board monitoring as well. And I think I had a similar one as well, is just like, how do we, and I can't find it. If anybody sees it, feel free to read it. But I had one that was about, like, how do we get, you know, high-quality staff in our schools that probably have the most need for that? And, you know, research-based approaches to doing that. So I know like the easy, you know, thought, or the thing that typically seems to make most sense is to just pay them more to teach in a Title I school or a struggling school. And I'm not sure what the research is on that, but whatever y'all bring to us on that. I think that is just a key theme for me is if we know that the teacher is like the number one school-based factor in student outcomes, then let's see how that shows up in our budget. And do whatever, this is our chance to do something bold and different, but that the research would support as well. And so that, that's kind of like what I would love to be able to see. That's probably my number one. And then for me, my number two is, you know, if there are things that we're going to increase investment in, I think Lynn, you mentioned this too, is like, let's see, like, the justification for that. Like if, for example, if literacy first, we put a big, you know, we knew that third grade reading was super important to us, and literacy first is a program, I think that's our second grade. And we did that because it was a research-backed program with a lot of demonstrable results. So I can't remember how much we expanded it by, Ed, do you remember literacy first?
It was a.
Yeah, okay, twenty-one campuses, so, and I think literacy first did send us some data to show how those kids were doing, and it was pretty impressive to me. And so like, that's the kind of stuff, like if we, if there are things that we did last year that made a difference, that would impact our student outcomes, please bring that to us and see, like, with, you know, the recommendation of whether or not we want to expand that, or keep it where it is, or whatever. And also the programs that we know are working, and the data is super clear that it's working, that's probably not a place where we would wanna make cuts. So anytime we can tie it back to actual data is helpful. Of course, understanding that there's some things that you won't see immediate student data impacts, like our wraparound services, I don't know how you would connect that directly to student data, but there may be other evidence that, that you could bring to us. And likewise, is there, are programs that we can, I mean, this is another time, like, we don't have money, right? And so I would say if there's stuff that's not doing what the intent is to do, and they've been around for a while, and we need to cut them, and so that we can invest in things that we do make a difference, my request would be like, just bring it to us. And I, I feel like as long as we can defend our decisions, we should be able to, you know, move forward with some of them. Those are my two cents.
I have a comment to what you were saying, trustee sing. So my literacy first, for example, what was the investment? And what was the goal of number of students, and did we reach that goal? Because if it did work, then it could double the number of students that would be impacted. So I think that's the data that I'd like to also be clear about.
Thank you.
I think we indicated, you know, tied to student outcomes in the, you know, as, as one just constant, but also having a broader understanding of student outcomes, so they're focusing on student mental health and student safety and student well-being, and that's what we're supporting the things that are the precursor to academics, to outcomes. So.
Love that.
You know, I, I, I end up being sympathetic to more counselors or stuff on mental health, or is that the other, because I see them tied to these things that are necessary prerequisites to the outcomes.
I also think we're in a, a place where we don't have the constraints we're gonna adopt, we don't have that piece of our puzzle. And I think it makes it hard to talk about that piece of it on, in this conversation right now. Cuz we do have a good sense of what needs to be our scorecard, what will be on our scorecard. Three of the five are, we have very little flexibility on, like, we know for sure what those are gonna be. And I think we have a sense that middle school math, or, you know, something else will be really important. We've got, we're pretty dialed in on that. And so I do see missing from here, a lot about the constraints. And, and we need to maybe come back and do this again as we start dialing that in after spring break. Might be time to do this exercise one more time with that in mind.
Candace? You're quiet over there.
Put in, I put in the thing.
Wait, what color is your?
Ink.
Okay, anything you wanna talk about?
You know, we have a, one thing that we don't talk about very much, but it's just kind of ever-present is our thresholds for when we're, when we look at a contract, like in terms of its dollar amounts and size. And aren't the other thing on there about, you know, evidence justifying continuation of largest contracts? But is there a need for additional conversation about our use of third-party folk in general? Like, I don't know what percentage of our budget that ends up being the end of the year, but there's lots of third parties. I guess, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm asking you, Mattia, it's like, should we be looking more closely? Yeah, how much of our budget is the after-school programs, and literacy first, and then this, and then that? Things where we go third-party?
I don't, can't give you the exact percentage, but I mean, as a function of the overall budget, probably pretty small.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think that's what we often run into, I think if it comes to like special education, where we have to outsource a lot of support when it comes to evaluations, that's a contract, a third-party contract.
Right.
And it's a huge dollar amount. So I think when it comes to smaller contracts, we're getting consulting services, or audit, you know, those sorts of things, those are fairly small in the grand scheme of the dollars that we're talking about. I think it does require a deeper dive and cleaning a lot of that up. We do not wanna get into a place where we rely on outside consultants all the time, right?
Does that, does that come from, so there, there's a lot, you have a bunch of line items? And you know what, we're, we wanna do this thing that requires somebody at third, we wanna give a contract to somebody for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. You just find the appropriate line and deviate from that?
There's some flexibility in how it's built out, you know, so whenever our budget is loaded, we have called BTOs. Each department has their BTO, you have classified staff, you have professional staff, then you have all the other direct costs, right? So there, I mean, technology's included in that, everything that's tied to that department. And then you have a line item for consultants or third-party support, right? And an example of that might be in operations, whenever we have a big bond or long-range planning process, you're gonna see the, the BTO within operations swell, right? In an effort to project that cost, which is gonna be, you know, consultants coming on board, helping us through a long-range plan, or whatever. And that is the case across the district. Now, in most cases, we can forecast, hey, we're probably gonna need, you know, funds to perform X service, you know, whether it's a study over compensation, it might be an audit, right? It might be any one of those things, and so we put two hundred thousand dollars in a line item, and then we go through the process because we have a process right now where you can't actually start a contract unless we know we have the funds. Right? That, that, that's, that's one of the constraints. You can't just say, I wanna go get the service, until the funds are already in the account to actually, you know, start the procurement process. That wasn't always the case, just by the way. So, so I think there's opportunity for improvement there. I just don't wanna mislead anybody and say that there's like tons of money, you know, in these spaces relative to what we're trying to do as far as moving the needle. And some of the biggest contracts are actually tied to like bond program, right? Things that wouldn't actually end up in one nine-nine, a children's operating budget, they're actually tied to bond dollars. And so I bet if we ranked all of them, the, all, many of the biggest ones, aside from special education, would all be on that side of the ledger. But I think it's an opportunity to, to, to focus, I, we don't wanna depend on them certainly. But I also, one of the things we do talk about is that there is this perception internally that sometimes a third party, that information is gonna be relied upon or received better than if it's coming from within a district, right? That's, that's just reality. I don't know how we got there, but that is something that does happen. And so I, I think if, if the, if we wanna get to a place where we're not relying on third-party entities to provide a service, then we need to acknowledge that whenever that information comes forward to the board, or to the administration, whoever, that it's not third-party, you know, and it's okay. But that, that's something we've also struggled through, just honestly. You know, sometimes we feel as though it's better to go get third-party, who's gonna be trusted better. So there's a lot there. I've dealt with these contracts for a long time, but I do have a feeling about them for sure.
And how much of that, I mean, he mentioned after-school, we've taken almost all of that back, right?
Uh, I mean, like the community, I don't wanna talk about specific vendors, but we do have vendors, I mean, that we've, you know, provided support for, and that, you know, childcare is one aspect of it, but wraparound services?
No, I don't mean wraparound, I meant like third-party things that we, like, I don't know, did you mean like childcare, like after-school care, or did you mean like?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, everything is in that book, everything, everything we consider, like, whether it's wraparound services, those, many of those are outside contracts.
Yeah.
You know, childcare providers, those are also, you know, so, I mean, almost everything we do, unless it's an AIC employee, is gonna be viewed as an outside contract. And maybe it's just the way it is. I mean, like, you know, like some of our partners, like, you know, all of our community partners, they're all, you know, they're all contracts.
Well, it's, it's, it's an area where, are we getting too deep in this, this too much?
I mean.
I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, go ahead.
Well, it's an area where, on one hand, there's a lot of work, and, I mean, there's, there's so many contracts. Cuz I am talking about the range of things with which we go outside. And in many cases, I'm sure, and in fact, I'm confident, that bringing in somebody that that's their niche really is value-added, cuz they're really good at it. And I think there's a history where, and this isn't an AID thing, this is like a global thing, where it's like the outcomes are squishy. And in worst-case scenarios, you're, you're giving contracts to keep people off your back, or you're, you're just kinda smoothing water. And I'm not saying we're engaging these things, but it's a squish, it's an area that there's a lot of energy on all these little things. And it could be that at the end, it, it adds up to so little that that's okay. Or it could be that this is kind of an expenditure of resources, how much money.
I think the point you said when you started out, is that it's, right? And the, the time when it, when it, when it doesn't become a niche service is when you probably need to internalize it, right? And the reality at all is sometimes you need someone with a very specific skill set to do a very specific skillful work. And I don't really acquire sixty hours, you know, and so you're not gonna hire a full-time FTE, you know, with compensation, with. And so there's a lot of those little things that kind of add up. But whenever it gets to the point where it is no longer niche, it's a, it's a service that we need in this district long-term, then it's internalized. And I would say there are positions where that's been the case, where overtime is transitioned and it goes to internal. But it's gotta be pretty consistent, like a continuous.
Well, I like the, so like what you just said? There's a theory of options, there's, there's a theory of how and why we do things that I really appreciate. It's, it's niche, it's small, putting an FTE on it doesn't quite make sense. It's something that somebody else would do really well, so there we do it. If it ever gets to a threshold, and I'm repeating, I think it's important, if it ever gets to a point where it's like, actually, you know, this mental health stuff that we were going out for, this is something everybody's dealing with, this is the world we live in, it's time to bring this in-house and build it into the budget and have that specialization kind of memorialized. If I can make a sticky saying, I like that kind of delivery event, like, because I bet you among our twelve-hundred districts, I could go with eleven-hundred that wouldn't have anything like that. And then you, you dial into their external contracting, it looks pretty much, not much. So.
Put, put the city. You can make that one.
I'm not agitating, Kevin, the.
So Candace, I have a, a piggyback, can I, it's me.
Oh!
I'm right here. I know, my voice sounds like over-projected, anyways. So quick commentary, I mean, part of that for me is like the contract performance monitoring, which I know isn't in a governance role, but it, the kind of information that Kevin, you're kind of asking for in some of the other stickies, a couple of the other stickies, it is dependent upon how solid, how structured, and how well-executed does the administration perform contract performance monitoring? And, and if we look at our mental health contract alone, you look, have, if you haven't seen it recently, you look at the executed contract, and you look at, okay, well, what are the performance measures, right? Are they qualitative and quantitative, right? Is it, is it a good mix? What's the cadence of the monitoring? Who's monitoring, right? And so, like I said, I mean, I know that that level of oversight is not governance. And yet, right, the administration would need to have that structure in place. And so I don't know if the administration feels like there's room for improvement in that area.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's, it's been one of my ongoing initiatives since I joined AIST, honestly. I, I will say that your point is, is like, one of the biggest points that we haven't really talked about in, in quite some time, which is, as an organization, we're not used to reading contracts, even though you're the owner of the contract. Like, if I'm a department and I need a service, you know, I, I go through procurement, we get a service agreement, we agree to the terms, we identify the budget, we move through the process, we get the vendor, and then we continue on. But the ownership of the contract should reside with the person who's overseeing the work, right? It's not Ed's responsibility, cuz he's over procurement, to ensure that every single contract is being executed with fidelity. It's the department who's, needs the service, right? And then there, there, you know, there are metrics in the agreement, you know, are you hitting them, are you performing? And a lot of times, just historically, you know, we don't, the system do a good job of keeping up with those metrics. And then sometimes churn occurs, you have contracts that last multiple years, you don't know who owns it. And then all of a sudden, there's this like creep that occurs in the contract itself. And that, that is an area of improvement, and it's one we struggled with for a long time, honestly. It's, you gotta get comfortable, I mean, I would tell people, and has heard me say this, Brandy, certainly Heather, Jacob too, is if, if you're gonna ask for a service, you better know the contract, you better know the budget, you better know what you're asking for, and you're gonna need to know whenever that service provider is either meeting their goals or not. And that's, that's a different level of expectation.
And documenting everything, because like you said, with turnover, so, say I'm monitoring a contract, because I oversee that particular program that receives that third-party service, and I'm like, "Oh yeah, Candace is great, she's awesome, we're rocking and rolling," and then I win the Lotto, I leave, Ophelia comes in after me, and she's like, "So where's the documentation, you know, how do I know how Candace was doing?" Right? So it's really, like, so I think that's why, on some of these, I plus-one them, but I'm not entirely sure if the information is even available, you know what I mean?
So I have two more that I've thought of, just listening to y'all. And I was reminded of something that Lynda and I saw when we were in DC last week. So, districts across the country are making cuts, right? Not just Texas. And one of the best practices we learned about was having a menu, so if a district, if the administration's gonna recommend that we make cuts, like, let's say we decide, you know, we've got to increase special education stipends, 'cause we've got 60 positions to fill, or like, whatever it is that you feel like, okay, we have to make an additional investment somewhere, and we know, y'all just told us that whatever we increase, we've gotta cut somewhere, right? So I would say, like, if you are gonna have to make cuts, like, present the board, the community, like a menu, like, here are all sorts of cuts that we would have to make, and I think the beauty of doing something like that is, it allows the community to kind of share in the pain. It's not that we wanna inflict pain, but they've gotta see, like, we're kind of all in this together, and so I think that would really be helpful, like, when we're thinking about, especially how our budget aligns with our values, because that's what that usually will tell you pretty quickly, like, how people react to certain proposed cuts.
Can I play devil's advocate?
Please, yeah, I think I know what you're gonna say.
So, it's about me. We have values for all 75,000 students and however many thousand employees. My kid is seeing special education services, spend a billion dollars on special education services. My kid is black, invest more money. I think our public is very wise, I don't, I think them watching us walk through the process is more valuable than them doing the process, because I even thought about that last year, when we had to do that, and I was like, "I got $200,000, I told you, can't do nothing with that." And in the real world, you know? Like, I think that was valuable for us, I don't know that, because when I sat out here, I thought much more differently than I do now that I sit here.
For sure.
It's just different. I mean, you probably get that also, but I just don't know how much value it would be in them, for them to say, 'cause then what happens if they all say, "Yeah, do that?"
Well, I don't, yeah, and I should probably, it's not that, like, we have the public vote on what the cuts are.
No, but I'm saying, well, the people says, "A," and we really felt like, probably "B" would've been better. Well, now, how do you explain to them? 'Cause that's another, that's what we're known for, is saying, "We already made up our mind, let's pretend that we're talking," I mean, we're changing that, right? We're trying to change that. So I don't think we should do anything that might, can be misinterpreted as that, or that people would feel that way. I think that's kinda gonna happen, but let's not add to that. There's value in that exercise, there is, I just don't know how much it is for everyone.
Yeah. Oh, and the other one was, what did I write here? Oh, yeah, so, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to articulate this well, but there are a lot of ease, there are a lot of wins, I think, that are sometimes within easy reach, it's kind of like the last mile, you know, so you've brought a kid up to this point, and there's just like a little bit more they need before we, before they get some sort of student outcome, like they meet a C C M R indicator or something. And it's like, I would like to see some evidence that we're paying attention to that. So if we've got kids who have, for example, passed the T S I, but for some reason, they're not getting, graduating with like an associate's degree, or an industry certification, or going direct to college, that to me is like a last mile issue. We already got them academically prepared, they just needed that other nudge. And so like, I would like to see some evidence that we are paying attention to that as well, because that, that could very quickly increase some of our scorecard, like the attainment of some of our scorecard metrics. It's a lot easier to bring a kid from, you know, this much than to bring them all the way up. Not that we ignore these kids, but let's make sure that the kids that we've already got 90% of the way there, we get them 100% of the way.
So you're saying, put investment in those things that we know...
Yeah, well, we just need a little bit, could go a long way in meeting our...
I think in that case, that's where, when you're talking about the attendance tonight, right? You're like, 90%, and normally that'd be really good, but I'm like, 90%, man, we gotta be better than that. 1% is $46 million, right?
Four point six.
Four point six, oh wow, that's still good too. See, these numbers are, four point six million dollars, right? But here's the thing, I believe in my heart that graduation coaches could do that, but that's an investment, right? But if that investment, you know, yield that 4.6, right? So, I don't know, I'm gonna say graduation coaches make, I'm gonna make up a number that's really low, okay, $25,000, so I can do easy math, right? So if you hired two of, 10 of them, that's 250, am I, my math is good, right? That could net us 4.6, right? So, I feel like that's low-hanging fruit, because it's easy not to come to school, and nobody's not like, "Oh, yeah, we know you're not in school, what's going on? Oh, you're going to a new school? How, why would you get records to go to that new school? Come on, let's, you know, let's me take you back to the school, let's help your mom or whatever." Or, I don't know if they're graduation coaches, maybe there's somebody else that does that work now, but if, we don't have people out there doing that, then we're leaving money on the table, if that's an investment, so then where does that $250,000 come from?
Well, and that's only 10.
That's only 10, right? That's just really like three schools, four schools, maybe, yeah.
Not a lot.
Yeah, so, those are the kinds of things, and we're, we're not talking, I mean, a particular school district in Texas that just said, you know, "Yeah, we're not gonna do librarian," they cost too much. Their experience and intelligence, we need people just to check books in and out, right? We'll pay $12 an hour to do that. We're not there, but I think people are holding their breath, and they're waiting to see, and I'm waiting to see, right? So when we get that meeting, or whatever, like what you're saying, is to say, here is the cut, the evidence that matches the, what we're saying, the three areas that we're saying, and here is where we think this will come from, or where we will shift, move, whatever. That's kind of the arc I need to see, because, I mean, I'm pretty much an art facilitator, right?
I know.
But, it's like, what am I...
And I think, like, so with the cut, and I don't know if this is kind of what you're saying, but like, I think, I appreciate your comments about like, the community being presented with a menu, and what that could mean. I think, so I'm gonna revise my suggestion, which is, you guys know our community pretty darn well, too. And so, I think it's helpful for us, for you to bring us along, and why you decided to cut this instead of that. You know, like, think about the thing, or invest in this thing instead of that other thing, because I can anticipate, people be like, "Well, don't cut this, cut that instead," or, "Hey, invest in this instead of that." And so, like, if you can anticipate what they're gonna say, and already have your response to that justifying your choice, I think that would be really, really helpful.
And I really wanna back up what Candace was saying, about where can we spend money to save money or make more money? And to think about what one parent support specialist, you don't have to keep many kids in the district, to pay for a parent support specialist, where art facilitators, is that a place where we retain teachers, you know, keep our kids well-served, you know, kind of accomplish a bunch of things at once? And where are those investments that really net us savings in other ways, or increased revenue by better attendance, or better enrollment, or other things, or better teacher retention?
Well, I was thinking also, looking at, at money that we receive, like, the city, with their programs, we get money, and it's not costing us, is it? Matthias, the after-school program funds, and ACE funds, it's not costing us, this money that's coming to us?
And most of the, yes, it's direct, but I would say that, that's not always the case in every type of fund that we receive.
Right.
In cases we're obligated to participate.
Right.
And so, maybe we should teach you, if we're gonna ask for money, a lot of times that money comes as strings attached, so I want to be really precise in grants we pursue, really precise in everything we pursue.
But I think it's also an opportunity to create that culture of everything that, everyone that wants to work with us, or provide something, that it's tied to our scorecard. You know, the reading, that the after-school program is, is addressing reading and math, so that it's, it's connected, and it's not standalone, which is, you know, so that would help, help us in areas that, we won't need to hire that full-time person, 'cause it gets paid through this program, you know? So we're able to figure, figure out how we can get the staff to align with what we're trying to do as a whole for that campus, if that makes sense.
It does, I think the thing that we're gonna run into...
To work through together, until we're there. So I said two things at the same time, which is the initiative part and the compensation piece.
As a broader question, to raise, I've been...
All right, so, I think, does any trustee have anything else that they feel like they wanna share? So I think we can, I would like to hear a little bit from the administration about, you know, now that you've heard some of the questions we have, and, you know, have expertise working on budgets, what do you think are possible, like, what do you think might be the next steps as we work as a team of 10?
Well, I think...
Well, I think, you know, based on the conversation today, you know, I think we have a better understanding of the constraints that we're going to operate within over the next several months, as we begin to, to really dive into this process. I think initially, just, it's going to be important that when we talk about understanding the outcomes, or potential impact of student outcomes on different line items, we need to focus on puts and takes, right? It, it's going to be difficult to go into the system, you know, to one line item that is like, you know, across multiple schools, that is, is nowhere near something we would consider taking away or adding, and then do an analysis on that. Like, I, I think given the capacity that we have, we'll probably start the conversation off with, you know, these are things that we believe align with our initiatives, will move student outcomes based on the goals and values of the organization. This is where we think the investment needs to start. These are the thoughtful potential cuts. And I think one of the things that maybe President Singh, we've talked about, is whenever we talk about a cut, we need to be very, very clear, and it's actually on here, I think maybe you did it, trustee Boswell, like, you know, how is that responsibility going to be delegated elsewhere in the system? Or through another entity? Or are we just going to choose not to do it? Right? I think in the past, there have been times when we've cut, and there were responsibilities that we thought were delegated, or we thought that, you know, maybe that, you know, responsibility was not needed. And then all of a sudden, I'm talking to principals, and their frustration in their face about why this one resource is no longer available goes back to, well, that position was cut.
That was trustee Koppna. I plus-one did.
Oh, that was, okay. And so I, I think the, the intentionality around the puts and takes, I think is going to be the focus. I, I think, there, there are going to be things that are in our budget, because we have a huge budget. We just, I mean, it's just a large organization, that I don't know that we're going to be able to tell you, hey, this, this item here, that really is maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars, it's one we've been doing for a while, you know, it's not going to be a focus early on. Now, we, we may get there, but just given the number of things, I really want to focus on the puts, the takes, the big things, and then kind of winnow down as we refine in April and move towards May. That's, that's kind of, just thinking how this could work, is, is probably what I'm feeling would be most appropriate.
And when we start talking about possible increases in compensation, assuming that'll be on the table, I would really love for that to come with a corresponding menu, like a big list, of what kind of cuts would be needed to match that dollar figure. It would be helpful to see, not, not really proposed cuts, but just what are we talking about? What are our options on the table? To make up for that.
And I, I want to make sure that I keep the two bins separate. I never want anybody to feel, well, if I, if I cut this, I keep this, right? Like, there's a direct correlation between the put and the take. I would say that, you know, this, these are the, the array of different potential compensation adjustments, right? We can talk about percentages, and that net out is X amount. And then over here, on the, on the, on the, the takes, it'd be these things in this order, because we think that we can adjust and accommodate accordingly.
And it's putting dollars in context, that's what I'm not saying, like, if you do this, we're going to lose that. That's not what I'm saying. But when we talk about, you know, $9 million to give our classified employees a $1 raise, what does $9 million mean on the other side?
Yeah.
Like, what kinds of things are we, yeah? Because I think if we're talking about $9 million without context, I think it's that context that's really valuable.
Well, and, and I think if we do this correctly, conceivably the first $9 million should be the first $9 million, regardless of what you pick, right? Because we would have gone through a, I mean, I mean, honestly, right? Because we would have done the analysis, and we would have determined that these are the, the first dollars that we think we can still continue to operate, you know, support our classrooms, do these things, be aligned with our values, but we can manage around this. So, so I think in that way, we, we wouldn't have that, hopefully, scenario in which we're, you know, exchanging this, this investment for this cut. Like, I don't want to get to that place.
I just think if the scale of dollars don't mean anything, unless you explain what those dollars are.
Yeah.
And it's really helpful to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, so we're at 75 minutes, we got to stop. But I think this is really helpful discussion, so thank you all, thank you for being such good listeners, our little peanut gallery over there. Thank you. I was trying to interpret your nods and do the whole psychic connection.
Look at Brandy, she's like, my.
I know, I know. It's like, do I keep saying this? Brandy's nodding, okay, I'll keep talking. But anyway. So thank you all. So we will go ahead and, I think, adjourn this session. I guess I have a script for that. Let's see. Yes, we will now recess the open meeting and go back into executive session. So we'll recess at 11:02 PM, move to exec session pursuant to Texas government codes. These all start with 551, .074, .072, .073, .087, .076, .0821, and .071. Am I allowed to do that, Christine? Okay. When we are finished, I know, when we are finished with the executive session, we'll briefly return to the open session to formally adjourn the meeting. The adjournment will be recorded and included in all replays of tonight's meeting, so thank you for joining us, and have a good evening. All right, so we will now reconvene the open meeting at 12:19 AM. Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, having a motion by Secretary Boswell, and a second by trustee Zapata, to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, the motion passes unanimously, the meeting is adjourned at 12:20 AM. Thank you.